Come on, come on over. Thank you very much, Madam President, and good morning, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, members of the council, and now, Mr. President. It gives me great joy today, but also sadness, to pay tribute to another star in Los Angeles. It's kind of like bidding Shaq goodbye, but you're not going to Miami, so we close by. We are saying goodbye to Jasper Williams, who has been a leader both inside this city and the city department, Community Development Department, and outside of it. Somebody who has distinguished himself with an extraordinary record of innovation, of caring, of getting things done and knowing how to get things done. Two things that are not always easily found here in the city of Los Angeles. Jasper Williams today is being honored for 26 years of government service. And before Tom Lebon's Jasswood High School he went to, he was raised in Los Angeles, and do you want to ask a question? He went to Compton High School, went to El Camino College, completed his BA in Psychology at UC Berkeley, and got a master's degree as well over at USC. And he has had an illustrious career with our Community Development Department, which began with his original appointment in January of 1984, more than 20 years ago, as a junior administrative assistant in the CDD's then Industrial and Commercial Development Division. And Jasper's really seen and overseen programs through some of our most challenging times here in Los Angeles. Times when our city's economy was battered by natural, man-made disasters, civil unrest, recessions, near-depression. And he has always been able to help this city not only weather the storms, but do it in a way that really pays tribute to the way that he thinks and pushes us to do even better. His long career in economic and community development at CDD brought Jasper a variety of positions that he held. He was a grant management specialist I and administrative assistant I and II. He was program monitor for the commercial area revitalization effort or care, dealt with facade improvements and coordination with a lot of our nonprofit agencies, such as Bario Planners, Vermont Sloss and Economic Development Corporation. He became the first manager of the city's enterprise program, and at various times managed the central city enterprise zones and the Greater Watts Enterprise Zones, bringing a real geographic diversity to the places he has worked. In 1991, he was promoted as Senior Management Analyst I in CDD's Youth Employment Services Division, where he served as manager of the Job Training Partnership Dislocated Worker Program, which became actually the first model for what we have now as our WorkSource Center Program. He's weathered going from JTPA to all the new manifestations of WorkSource throughout, of getting folks back to work throughout those years. In June of 1998, Jasper received a promotion to Senior Management Analyst II, and became the Deputy Director of CDD's Industrial and Commercial Development Division, where he's in charge of lending, the Industrial Development Authority, and the Business Assistance Center Program. All vital programs for our economic strength here in Los Angeles. And in 2000, he received his appointment as Chief Management Analyst, where he now directs CDD's Industrial Commercial Development Division, which I have to say, from a personal point of view, it's always a joy to have Jasper in committee. I'm sure that our CLA and CAOs who have worked with him very closely feel the same way. I know my staff does as well. Jasper was somebody who could cut through it. If you needed him to summarize something in five seconds, he could do the five seconds. If you needed five minutes, he could do the five minutes. If you wanted longer, he could even do that too, though we never really asked that from him too much. He's been a friend and a mentor to his coworkers too. Wouldn't be just enough to have that record, but he's also been able to impart that to the folks that he has worked with. He's pushed them not to be just public servants, but to be more, to be better people. And Jasper's leadership, his creativity, his humor, his wry smile, I know certainly for myself, will be missed. And he's done much more than just touched the lives of people who have worked with him. He has helped shape this city, giving jobs to some of the neediest residents, helping businesses grow here at a time when we so badly need them to grow, and by strengthening our neighborhoods to make them essentially better places to live. His wonderful wife Melva is with us here today. He has a daughter Leah and son Drew, who have also supported him in every way. And from this resolution here, which only begins to capture the man that Jasper Williams is and has been here as a professional in the city of Los Angeles, we bid you goodbye. We thank you for incredible service here to this city, and on behalf of the mayor, entire city council, city attorney, city controller, city clerk, and I know many people that we all work with as well, we congratulate you Jasper, and we look forward to keeping in touch with you. Thank you Jasper. Mr. Reyes.
You know, it's with great hesitation and downright sorrow to see you go Jasper. I mean, there are very few folks who have the, in Spanish they call it sabiduría, the knowledge, the ability to know how to move things, especially when we're dealing with many, many complicated environments. When we had the empowerment zone debates after the riots, the discussion of how we bring in businesses, the challenge of how we provide technical assistance to those folks who are entrepreneurs and small business folks, but don't understand the bureaucratic, this Byzantine system that we have, when we're dealing with city, county, and state issues. And you were able to shepherd many of that through. Many meetings where we talk about, okay, how does this happen? And you can pull out, oh, we have a section this and a section that, and maybe leverage over here to put this over there. We can put together this puzzle. My favorite one is when we used the Section 108 to put together Home Depot. We saved the Lawrie's Gardens together with the county and the state folks, and literally showed how increments from the retail funds can help pay off a loan that can present immediate results for the future, and saved the beautiful garden, which is now the river center, which is now the heart of this big river movement that we see happening. A lot of it happened back then, in the early 90s, mid 90s. So I want to thank you for that, and I have a funny feeling you're going to be around. I have a funny feeling people are going to watch your expertise, who are going to want to be able to build upon that sabiduría. And I just want to thank you for that, because I really think you work from the heart. And that's something you can't put a price on, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good school.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Garcetti for acknowledging Jasper. Jasper, we've had the distinct pleasure of working together for many, many, many years. I think Eric described it well, is your impact that you've had on this city, and that you've thought outside the box, that you at a moment's notice could, whether when I was at HUD, come in and be able to explain exactly what the city of Los Angeles was doing, or when we were in the mayor's office creating wonderful programs, economic development programs, et cetera. But I just want to say thank you, and as Ed, I think, also said, it's really awful that you're leaving us. And so we know, however, that you're only a phone call away when we have questions and so forth. But I just want to say thank you, and thank you to your family who has shared you with us over these years, because you work lots of nights and weekends, and been really a true dedicated public servant. So thank you for all your hard work, and we're sorry to see you leave. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, I need to first of all take note that it feels a lot better standing behind this mic than sitting behind those mics up there. The temperature's even different here, so I'm appreciative of that. I have worked for the city of Los Angeles as a passion, as something that was, this work is personal to me. And yes, I was born and raised in Los Angeles. I'm much like yourself, a bona fide homeboy, and I take great pride in that. Hollywood homeboy, right? I take great pride in that, and I take pride in having been a part of some new adventures here in the city of LA, and figuring out how to get some things done. And the things that you recognize me for, because I was the one at the table gabbing about what it was and what it would do, I need to acknowledge my colleagues, the people in the CLA's office, and the CAO's office, city attorney's office. It takes all of us, including your own staff, to figure out how to put these pieces together and make things work. I think my greatest personal hope is that many of the things that we have worked so hard to create will continue, and that will lead to greater things in the future. This is a place well worth doing good things in, and it's nothing but a great future that I see for this city. So I thank each of you for taking the time to sign this beautiful resolution. This will go in a prominent place in my house. I also thank my wife, because even though she grumbled a little bit, she did support me in everything that I've been a part of. And so again, I'm honored and I'm thankful that you take a moment to say that you notice I've been here. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you very much, Mr. Williams.
Thank you very much, and at this time, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cardenas Garcetti.
Cardenas Garcetti, Gural Han LeBonde, Lando Miskowski Parks, Perry Reyes Smith, Villarosa Vice, Zain Padia, 12 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zain moves and Mr. LeBonde seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Cardenas moves and Mr. Reyes seconds.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday. Do you wish to do the flag salute?
Yes, let me have Mr. Garcetti finish with his pictures over there and then lead us in our pledge of allegiance and then we'll return to the matters on our agenda. Actually, instead of Mr. Garcetti, I see Mr. Cardenas has a few special guests here. Maybe they can help us out. What do you think, Mr. Cardenas? They do it all the time? Okay, stand up. Say please stand.
Please stand.
Put your right hand over your heart.
Put your right hand over your heart.
Place the flag.
Place the flag.
Ready to begin.
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
You may be seated.
I get a feeling they've done that before. Look at those smiles. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Let's actually go through the agenda, dispense with consent items, and then we'll come back to general public comment.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there is a request, item number nine, from Council Member Parks to continue that matter to August 3rd.
Members' request to continue item number nine, seeing no objection, item nine is continued. Next item.
Also a request from Council Member Reyes to continue item number 17 for one day, and that would be July 21st.
Okay, members' request to continue item 17, also without objection. And sergeants, if I can ask for your help, please, it's starting to get a little loud back here. Members, if you have staff behind the horseshoe here that doesn't need to be here, or if their conversation can be taken to the back room, we'd appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Items one through five are items noticed for public hearing. They are street lighting ordinances.
Okay, members, items one through five now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed on items one through five. Members wishing to call any specials, one through five, seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item six, seven, and eight are also street lighting matters, and council should open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to August 10th.
Members, items six through eight now before us, and again, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, and without objection, continue to August 10th. Next item.
Item number 10 is also a public hearing item, and the applicant requests a continuance to August 3rd.
Okay, members' request to continue item 10, also without objection.
Next items on the agenda are items for which public hearings have been held, items 11 through 19. Item number 11 has two reports on the file.
Members 11 through 19 are now before us. Public hearings have been held in committee on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Mr. LeBonde.
I want to call thirteen specials.
Okay, thirteen call special by Mr. LeBonde. Nineteen call special by Mr. Villarosa. Mr. Zain. Eighteen call special by Mr. Zain. Item 17 has been continued. Any other specials? Seeing no other requests for specials.
And on item number 11, there are two reports. Does council wish to adopt both reports?
Unless they conflict, we'll adopt both reports on item 11. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Forthwith, item number 12, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have not been held, 20 through 47, 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is a commissioner on item number 20.
Okay, items 20 through 47 now before us. I do have cards on item 46, we'll call that special on the balance of the items. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Let's hold item 20 on the desk and we'll take this item as the first item out of order and approve or not approve a commissioner. Request for specials, Mr. Zain. Thirty-one call special by Mr. Zain, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, item 34, we can call that special. And item 27, can we hold that on the desk? Trying to get some information on that item.
On item 27?
Yes.
Okay, any other specials?
Item 33 and 55.
33 by Mr. Villarosa and 55 when we get there. Any other requests for specials on items 20 through 47? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved.
The next items, Mr. President, are closed session, items 48 through 53, and there is a request from the city attorney to withdraw item number 51 from the agenda.
Okay, members, without objection, item 50 is withdrawn from the agenda.
Item 51.
Excuse me, 51 withdrawn and referred back to the city attorney's office. The balance of the closed session items will remain on the desk. Next item, please.
Going to the supplemental agenda, item number 54 was a special presentation by the CAO and CLA. Do you wish to call that one special?
Yes, let's hold that on the desk.
And also 55 was called special by Council Member Villarosa.
Okay, to be considered in conjunction with item 33.
And the next item would be 56, and I believe there is a card on that one.
Yes, cards on item 56, we'll call that special to hear from members of the public. So members, unless there's an objection, what I'd like to do next is take up item number 20, which is consideration of a commission appointment by the mayor. Following item 20, we'll turn to general public comment for today's meeting and then come back to the balance of the items called special. Madam Clerk, item 20, please.
Yes, that is a communication from the Transportation Committee recommending approval.
Okay. Is Mr. Boyajin here?
That would be Mr. John Boyajin.
Please come forward at this time. Members, we do have a committee report recommending approval of this appointment. Do we have any members wishing to speak on item number 20? If not, then we're going to save you a little bit of time here. Let's open the roll. Quick on the draw. Mr. Villarosa.
Yes, I feel compelled, the...
Have a seat, please.
This is item 20. Mr. John Boyajin came before our committee. We didn't have a quorum that day, but we had an opportunity to query him about his experience, but most importantly, some of his concerns about transportation here in the city of Los Angeles, and we recommended approval of this appointment by the mayor. So I just want to stand up and acknowledge you, and there's no other speakers, so such will be the order.
Mr. Zain.
Thank you. I pushed that button quickly. Are you related to Albert?
Albert Boyajin?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good friend.
You are a very good friend. Yes, I know.
And he lives in the Valley, and I live in the Valley, and transportation in the Valley is a great concern, along with the whole city. So when issues come before you, you live in CD5, I believe, which, the west side?
I live in Studio City.
Studio City, so you live in the Valley. So you know what the 101's like and all the problems we go through.
Absolutely. I was there one hour this morning.
There you go. And I was probably right behind you trying to get to City Hall. That concern about transportation is critical, because it affects the quality of life, it affects business, it affects everything, as you know, as we live with every day. And when those ideas come before you in that committee, which is a very, very important committee, just remember that the impact you have is on millions of people. The Transportation Commission has tremendous impact on what we do in transportation. And two major issues, the flow of traffic and when tourists come to Los Angeles, and I know we have information that is going to be presented to you regarding the band of taxi cabs that affect a lot of people. And there's a special committee that handles that, but it's all about transportation, it's all about quality of life, it's all about getting your destination in a safe manner and a timely manner. And we find all too often, we spend an inordinate number of time trying to get to our destination, and then we're delayed because of some incident that takes place. So I welcome you to that. Please say hello to Albert for me.
I will.
He's been a good friend for many, many years, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Very important committee that you're going to be on, very important commission. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to ask, in regards to combining transit centers with housing, can you give me your perspective on that whole dynamic, that notion of building housing where the transit centers exist? Can I just get an understanding of your point of view on that issue?
Let me see if I understand you. Are you continuing your question that you asked me about a year ago?
Well, I just need to hear it again.
I don't know if I can speak that openly, but that department itself needs a major reconstruction as far as regulations go. I, working there, maybe it's not the politically correct thing to say.
Mr. Boyajin, can I ask you to speak closer into the microphone, please? Thank you.
I was surprised that every day there were new rules and regulations passing for the benefit of the tenants, and yet there was not a single rule passed for the benefit of the little landlord, the mama and papa type landlord, who provide all the housing. And these people are eventually selling to bigger corporations. So if we are going to be fair, we should be able to help these landlords also to help them provide housing for the less fortunate.
And I think everyone agrees with that, but I'm trying to understand the relationship of developing transit policies that complements housing strategies.
You are, I think I cannot solve the Israeli-Arab problem in one day, but I have been thinking about this thing for a long time, that since the original planning was not done like 50-some-odd years ago, when the first freeway was built, now the only thing we can do is just to ease the traffic, to create long bypasses. And some houses are going to be knocked down, they're going to be knocked down.
What I want to say, thank you for your volunteerism, lending your expertise in this very important commission. But I just want to be emphatic in that we are in a position where we can complement bus lines with dash systems, with circulators, to give communities an option so that they don't have to use their car. And for me, the bigger picture is, how do we move this city so that we decrease the number of cars on the freeways? So I guess my point is, I would hope in your position as a commissioner, that we can promote policies that allows for those relationships to occur, to actually understand where the transit-dependent people live, where they go from point A to point B, as well as the middle income and the upper-middle income, so they can have options, so they don't have to use their car. So my point is, I would love to see commissioners that can promote those kinds of policies that allows for the use of these systems in a way in which we provide people an alternative other than their car. That really is my point. And I wanted to know of your perspective on that, but we'll keep working together. Thank you.
Mr. LeBonde.
Mr. Boyajin, how are you? Have anybody in your family who's a doctor?
My son is.
Oh, Dr. Boyajin was our team doctor at Marshall High School.
Oh, is that right?
He lived in Las Feliz, but I just wanted to ask that. Traffic's a problem on Las Feliz Boulevard. And because of an incomplete freeway system that caused all that traffic to flow there. But I thank you for your service. Give me some of your, because you've been in Los Angeles a long time, and I know Ed asked you a couple of tough questions there, and Dennis brought some ideas up. What are some of your ideas as you serve on this Transportation Commission? What do you want to see your goal set?
Well, I think that...
Speak right into the microphone.
I think that the city has to be decentralized. Everything is in the center. The whole, people move out 70, 80 miles away, they live there and they come downtown to work.
So city to be decentralized, that's an idea, yeah.
I think it has definitely decentralized. And the other one that I think that we, what we should do, since the hub, the center of the city, all the freeways pass through it, I think we should have like seven to 10 miles bypasses from one side to other, so that from the east they can go to west, from west to east, without entering the center. Of course, we have the most difficult situation. I mean, sometimes you can do things, all good intentions end up being very, very bad. Like when we started building freeways, that was a wonderful situation, wonderful solution to mass move people very fast. But what happened? All the cities joined together, we have one guard and one center, and everybody comes in and we just get chalked right in the center. It was good idea, I think it's still a good idea, still will vote for it, but the result is not as good as we expected it to be. But we should have that, we should have some bypasses, definite bypasses. One of the bypasses that we made at freeway 10 bypass helps a great deal. What I'm suggesting is have a 10, 10 to 15 mile bypass over the downtown area, all the freeways, so we don't get congested in the center.
Thank you. I hope you look to, and I'm glad you talked about the freeway system there, but we just did some work on Highway 101, a community-driven study. I'll make sure it gets forwarded to you, so you can look at some of those modifications within the existing runaway. Tell me your views of public transit, et cetera. Public transit, tell me your views on public transit.
I don't know anything about public transit, because I cannot suggest, we have problems as far as public transit. On the surface, I think this idea came up, was entertained many years ago, that they didn't want to put transit lines over the freeways, because it looked like bad scars, and it made the city look ugly. And the city has geological problems that has to be taken care of, because then we have the earthquake situation, which makes things very difficult. In engineering, we had a saying, it says, if you have infinite amount of time and infinite amount of money, you have zero problems. But if you change this formula there, you'll have a lot of problems. The best we can do is Band-Aid it. We'll never so make it perfect, but we'll Band-Aid it. Hopefully, the best Band-Aid will be most useful.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonde. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll and confirmation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service to the city. Madam Clerk, let's send this item forthwith, please. And I believe this brings us to general public comment for today's meeting, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward at this time Armando Herman, followed by Dennis Wirick and Theoplis Is Mr. Herman here? Mr. Herman going once, going twice. Dennis Wirick? Mr. Wirick, are you here? Going once, going twice. And Theoplis Hodge, are you here? Mr. Hodge, going once. Here we go.
Hi, I'm Theoplis Hodge. I reside at the, in the south area of, I used to, south area of LA, in 8th district, and there were some firecrackers and fireworks that off and around the corner from my house on Sunday night. What can I do about that? What can I do about that?
Okay. Let me have Councilmember Parks have one of his staff members help you out with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Armando Herman, going once, twice. Dennis Wirick, if you're no longer here, cards will be added to the file, and this will conclude...oh, there you are.
How you doing, Councilmember Badia? My name's Dennis Wirick. I'm here to represent the 14th District of constituents. I'm here in behalf of the Evergreen Daycare. Seems like we have a delay on the program, but as I get a message from Villarreal every once while, it does kind of move on. We have run into a couple of snags on our financial budget with the program, so it seems like if we need some overseeing, someone to oversee this a little better, because the few deputies out of that office are not giving us very much attention at this point. The constituents of the 14th District are tired and were way behind on this project. Like I say, it's been seven years. And it seems like we need some assistance from all the other council members that are of years and time here. So, you know, my concern is that we, the people of the 14th District, need a little bit more, someone to oversee this, just as well as Villarreal. Seems like some of the people under him are not doing a good enough job, at least from my own concerns.
All right. Well, thank you for being here, and I think you'll have somebody try to address your needs as well.
I'd like to just voice that, okay?
Okay. And I think I saw Mr. Herman step back into chambers. This is your time. Okay, go ahead. Everybody's too polite this morning.
Dear friends and fellow councilmembers, we should all agree that the city services are needed to function with great efficiencies, effectiveness, and customer service. But when? Immediately. Without further delays and excuses. Why? Look at the streets of Boyle Heights, just in Boyle Heights alone, how filthy they are, to work with the community. Also, with its active constituents such as myself. Who without a doubt have the inspiration to improve and accomplish the hope for the way our neighborhoods should be and be for us all? The quality of life is an issue in our communities. I desire to improve, and not just the quality of life issues, but also the social conditions through actions of local government, to embrace social well-being for the majority rather than the few of mankind. The solution is to enforce ordinances, to enforce the law, and assure city services to benefit every one of us living in Los Angeles. And I would like for you to hear this comment.
Chief Braden's office, returning your call. Just for your information, we have received your letter, and it is being forwarded to Hollenbeck Police Department, the commanding officer, for his review and evaluation, and they will be the ones that respond back to you regarding your concerns on the alarming problem of gay violence in your area in Boyle Heights. Okay? So if you have any questions, you should contact Hollenbeck. The letter was forwarded from them. We received a certified letter that was signed for, and we have it in our possession, and we will be forwarding it to Boyle Heights, I'm sorry, to Hollenbeck Station regarding Boyle Heights. Okay? Thank you, sir. Bye-bye.
Hello, Mr. Herman. This is Adriana Martinez, Councilman Villarreal's office. I understand your call, and you're very upset while it's been explained to you before.
Mr. Herman? I wanted to take a pause here, and again, Mr. Villarreal is telling me he can have staff attend to your requests here.
I just want to talk about, not general complaints, and I just want to give you a heads-up that everyone in our office is aware that you're upset, and just so that you know, also, I have been given a directive from our chief of staff and our deputy chief of staff to not continue to have meetings with you unless there's a specific complaint.
Okay. Let me ask you to conclude at this time. This will conclude general public comment for today's meeting.
Well, I would like to later on approach his office, if you don't mind, Mr. Villarreal, and discuss part of this conversation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Villarreal, go ahead.
Yes. If one of, if Lisa or somebody from the staff could go and speak to the gentleman. Let me just speak to Mr. Wirick, though. I know Mr. Wirick raised an issue, and I just want you to know that the issue with the childcare center, Mr. Wirick, as you well know, has to do with an architect by the name of Leo Daley, who has been before this body, or the issue of Mr. Daley. We apparently had problems with him, not just at the childcare center, frankly, with a number of projects throughout the city. And we, since then, there's now a new architect that has been put in, and with the new merger, there, Rex and Parks is no longer going to be responsible for this, the building of these centers. It's going to be the Department of Bureau of Engineering, and we think with this new department, it's going to get moving a long way. So in addition to that, as you well know, because you were one of the advocates for, they're painting that rec center and also putting in new fencing. So I just wanted you to know that, and because of your leadership and your good work, we're moving ahead on those projects.
Okay. Thank you very much. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Adam Clark, next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange, item 13.
Members just wanted to call our attention to these new dedication to these signs, the Los Angeles River signs with the great Egrit and Loopy. Good to see you, right behind Ed Reyes, who's being briefed right now. These are the signs that are now out throughout, I believe there's 86 bridges that cross the Los Angeles River from where it originated, at Canoga Park High School in the great 3rd District under Mr. Zine's jurisdiction, at the Calabasas, and the Calabasas Creek comes together right there with the Bell Creek. Is that correct, Mr. Zine? All the bridges now have this great sign to bring awareness to the Los Angeles River. And I just want to thank everybody, I especially want to thank Craig Green and the great team of signmakers in Piper Tech, who do a wonderful job for the Department of Transportation, and all those workers there who are placing them up there to bring awareness to the Los Angeles River. On Thursday at 9:00 AM at Las Feliz Boulevard in the Los Angeles River, we're going to dedicate these signs, and I would like to invite anyone out there, but I wanted to call this special, because it is very special. Because if, I remember taking a guest from New York City out to show them the Los Angeles River. We had a little blue sign there, Ed, than the originals. And she was so impressed that we even had a river, that she didn't even know about it. Now with all the work that you and others are doing, and these little signs bring awareness to the great Los Angeles River, for which this city was founded on 223 years ago, when 44 people walked nine miles from Mission San Gabriel to form the pueblo. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labange, what kind of bird is that on that sign?
Say it again.
What kind of bird is that?
A great egrit. And I call him a crane, but they're beautiful, beautiful birds. And it's now the symbol of the Los Angeles River.
Mr. Reyes.
I just wanted to echo many of Tom's thoughts, but I think colleagues, when we say, and I keep emphasizing how we change our backyard into our front yard, the first thing you do is change the image and change the feeling for what the river really stands for. So many naysayers and detractors will say, "Well, what does a blue sign do for the river?" Well, bottom line is, unless you go there, you don't know what you have. And because we've made it our backyard, where we put away all our pipelines, our high-power lines, our oil lines, our rail lines, and everything else that no one wants in their neighborhoods, you just won't realize what's really there. Now, the beauty about that sign, and I appreciate the question from the Council President, is that we actually have egrits, we have herins, we have ducks, we have all kinds of flora and fauna, and folks just don't know about it. So imagine what nature has been able to do on its own survival instincts with the addition of the whole process of a regional watershed plan, with all its subwatersheds, the river is the spine, and we need to continue making this region healthier through our water system. So thank you, Tom, for your advocacy. You know, folks again will say, "What does a sign do?" I'm just trying to emphasize that we're taking baby steps now, we're setting the table for the future, and I'm hoping that with time, this just doesn't become a political win, but a necessity for our natural environment, as well as our ecosystem, as well as our socioeconomic conditions for many of the park poor areas of our communities. So thank you, Tom.
Mr. Labange.
Yeah, just thank you. Thank you, Ed, again, for your leadership as Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee. And I just really want to clarify, too, all the signmakers, from Wayne Tand all the way down to Craig Green and everybody in the sign shop, thank you very much. They're beautiful signs.
Okay. If there's no other members wishing to be heard on this item, let's open the roll on item 13, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, next item.
Item number 18 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I have someone from Personnel or Mr. Deaton maybe could answer the questions? Anybody here from Personnel? Mr. Deaton?
The CLA and the CAO may be appropriate for this as well.
I'm sure he'd probably know.
Mr. Fujioka?
He seems to know everything. At least he makes us think he knows everything.
Mr. Fujioka?
You studying the notes, Ron? Between Fujioka and Deaton, I'm sure we can come up with some answers on it. If you hold my time while they gather.
This came about in a motion due to the freeze that we had, and certain departments are going and getting outside contracts on their own without going through a process. And we wanted to plug that loophole. And the concern I have on this particular measure, which we asked that it come back to us in 60 days to see if it's working, when the mayor implements a freeze and the council moves that direction, and then certain department general managers, for whatever reason, go and do outside contracts, which are outside of the normal process, and we find out by accident, we want to make sure that this is going to be able to cover, so that doesn't occur. So when we make a policy direction, then it's followed and not short-circuited and circumvented by what we've seen happen in the past. And that was my question, that is this going to help rectify that particular situation that not too long ago took place, which prompted me to move forward with this motion?
Well, I can give you a very short answer. The answer is yes.
Okay. Is there anything else we have to plug into this? Because I haven't spoken with anyone from your office. This was done through my operation in the CLA's office, and I just want to make sure, I know we're going to get a report back in 60 days, but when we have the financial difficulties, we know we've seen in the past, and with the state budget still uncertain, who knows what's going to happen with that situation, with the current controversy? If something has to be done, and we do it for a specific reason, and Mr. Fujioka knows how the dollars come in and how we analyze those on a daily basis, when we give direction, it's not followed and circumvented by what we've seen happen, we want to make sure that we're safe and assured that we've got enough in that particular measure to follow the direction that's been mandated.
I think what we've done, as we've indicated in the report, is to establish a very systematic approach to contracting, and as part of that, our office will provide even greater scrutiny than we currently do in terms of reviewing contracts. So I think that in terms of the report that we're supposed to go back to your committee within 60 days, we'll be able to report the success of that.
Okay. One thing we recommend, that although there's an initial request to come back to your committee at a 60-day period, this should be something we revisit on an ongoing basis, so we can provide a quarterly report that speaks to, you know, the status of these type of requests, and that, I think that would put the necessary light of day on this particular issue. Know that our labor groups have, through the course of negotiations, raised this as a critical issue, because they've said in many instances that they feel city staff can provide the same service, if not at the same cost, but with some cost savings.
Well, that was one of the issues, that came up as a sidelight, the initial one was the freeze and just doling out outside contracts to provide a service without going through an established process.
Understand.
So there's the two-prong, that as well as the city workforce that we have available to handle responsibilities and handle the activities and the duties.
There's also the request that, or the recommendation that this council requests that the proprietary departments adopt the same process for handling their contracts, especially their personal services contracts.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I thank you for the work on it, and in 60 days, we'll hopefully see it's working fine. If not, we'll tweak at that point. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 19 called special by Councilmember Villarreal.
Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, Mr. President, members, this is a matter that I thought was important to speak on, because it is a month-to-month extension of a current contract between the city, Conex West, and the Watts Labor and Community Action Committee. And at the request of Councilmember Han, and frankly, the concerns that I had and that Councilmember Smith had with respect to this issue, we decided to put it over and put it on a month-to-month. We're hoping to resolve this in the next couple of months. This was a matter that frankly took a number of months. It was in the mayor's office, it was in the, we understand, the CAO's office, and we got it at the last minute, frankly, and didn't have the opportunity to adequately examine this issue. The Watts Labor Community Action Center has had a contract with the City of Los Angeles for almost, I think, 36 years, and were deemed not experienced enough, and so that caused some concern on the committee. So I wanted to speak to that, because, you know, normally, we would not have done a month-to-month in this case, but we just, there were enough concerns, both by the council member representing the area and by the committee members, that we felt a need to move to a month-to-month extension.
Thank you, Mr. Villarreal. Other members wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item number 27 called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, we're holding item 27 on the desk. Are we ready with that item?
We're not ready yet.
Okay. Let's proceed to the next one, please. Item 31, called special by Mr. Zine. Mr. Zine, item 31.
We're really skimming right through this today. Thank you. Do we have anyone here from Environmental? I would hope. Good afternoon, I mean, good morning. On this issue, Councilmember Smith and I represent an area of the San Fernando Valley that's impacted by the Santa Susana facility, Boeing and radiation and nuclear waste, et cetera. And the concern is, from the residents, that there's different conversations, different actions taking place from the federal level, from Senator Feinstein, from Ventura County, Linda Parks, and some people think that we're not really monitoring and watching as we should for the safeguard of the community. Anytime a project wants to go in now, they want to have a contamination study done. The concern that we have is that the city do monitoring of those departments, Department of Energy and all the cleanup that's supposed to be done, and now we read in the paper today that maybe not all our cleanup is going to be done, that is scheduled to be done, the different mitigation that has taken place. So we know that there was nuclear activity that took place at Santa Susana with Boeing for a number of years, on Department of Energy. for a number of years, on Department of Energy. We want to make sure that the city is represented at the table, the city is monitoring, the city has environmental affairs, is doing the job to protect the stakeholders and to keep us informed so we can take whatever action is necessary. While the federal folks are doing what they're doing, and Ventura's doing what they're doing, and the states are doing what they're doing, we want to make sure for our stakeholders, who are directly impacted by this, as they all live downstream from there with the groundwater contamination and all the other concerns, that your department be there on a constant basis, monitoring, noting, informing us, any action we need to take with the city attorney's office, the district attorney's office, whatever, to make sure that we have a safe community in the southwestern, northwestern part of the San Fernando Valley. If you look at Granada Hills, Chasworth, West Hills, Canoga Park, Rosita, that whole area is downstream from there. And that's the concern. Some people think we haven't really been doing all that we can do, and we want to make sure we do. And that's what this motion, that's what this issue is about. So, can you respond to that, please? What plans and what we can get done?
Sure. Craig Tranby with the Environmental Affairs Department. We have enrolled ourselves in the quarterly working group meetings that are being organized by Department of Toxic Substances Control and the US EPA. We are currently communicating with them more frequently than that, but will, in fact, participate in the September meeting that's next scheduled. We would like to convey that information as well to the appropriate neighborhood councils in coordination with the council offices as the information comes to us through the working group. In terms of the recent article, the environmental impact statement being requested and a lawsuit being threatened, we're going to look into that, and I think the city can make recommendations based on that. Our initial research, which we are to report back to the EQ Committee on, I believe, August 4th, we are looking at a number of the data sets that are out there right now, and observing where the sampling has been done to date, and if that is sufficient. So far, our understanding is where it has been done, nothing threatening human health and public safety has shown up. But if there is need for additional sampling, we would make that recommendation to the committee, convey that information to the neighborhood councils, and also look into resources where we could find, do that testing beyond this process, if it's not allowed through this process.
And as I understand, 192 million has been expended, an additional 52 million before completion in 2007. Well, that's obviously a tremendous amount of money. Is that going to take care of the problem? Because as I've read some articles, the ratio, they seem to keep changing, where you don't want to have any contamination. Well, this is an acceptable level, and there's some controversy about the acceptable level. How much radiation can the body be subject to? The cancer, the issues that have come up. We know about around the world, Chernobyl, Three Mile Island, we know situations have occurred. We know it's not to that degree. But while that site was used dating back to the 50s and currently used, and all the radiation contamination, carcinogenic materials, what else do we need to do from the city's perspective? Because again, we're the closest to the problem, being the local representatives.
Again, we're going to come back with a more complete report at the next meeting, and we're going to be on a 60-day reporting cycle to give you that information. Initially, I can tell you that the Area 4 on the SSFL side, that's where the radiation concerns are, and that is actually the furthest area from the city boundary. But we are certainly going to be looking into, there's nothing been detected, in my understanding, across the city boundary at this point. So, we're going to look into additional testing. Also, our department has looked into the idea of waste coming into the city, into the different landfills, and found no risks having occurred through that process. But again, we're going to provide a more complete report on all that at the next EQ meeting.
Okay. Can we have it quiet, please?
Again, can we have some quiet around the chambers, please, particularly up here?
Just a couple of final questions. Are we working with Ventura County and the county of Los Angeles, and do they have representatives at the table also monitoring?
I believe they do. I have not yet touched base with them on that personally. I know we've worked with them as the LEA, the Local Enforcement Agency, with our department on the waste issue in the past. But they're all a part of the working group. They're considered to be public participants, and the primary working group are the state and federal agencies.
So, we're at the table, and we're going to remain at the table, and reports are going to be brought back. Is there anything else your department needs that isn't there to get the job done? Other than, we're not cleaning it up, obviously, someone else is, but as far as protecting our stakeholders, the residents, the business community of the south-north, southwest San Fernando Valley?
As of right now, I think we have the ability to cover this matter, although we could report back on that as well, as those needs arise future. Right now, I think we will be okay.
Okay. And if you, I know you're going to the committee on that information, you could also keep Councilmember Smith's office in my office informed
Absolutely.
of the progress that's take place and any other problems that occur, because we want to maintain vigilance for the people of that portion of the San Fernando Valley, who again, don't feel we've been doing everything we can do. We want to make sure we do everything we can do to safeguard their communities.
Absolutely. We'll do that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. There's no one else wishing to speak on this matter, so the matters before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is approved. Next item?
Next item, item 33 and 55 were called special by Councilmember Viera Regosa.
All right. We will take those two items together. Let me recognize at this time, Mr. Viera Regosa.
Yes, Madam President and members, item 33 directs the appropriate city staff to work with Caltrans to extend and/or reapply for a grant for a transportation museum in El Pueblo, and instructs the CLA to report back in 60 days on alternative sites for a transportation museum. As you know, there are some issues with the transportation museum that was originally sited in El Pueblo. And so, what we're asking here is to approve this item and receive and file item 55, which is an outdated recommendation.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we have the recommendation from, oh, Mr. Labange.
Yeah, Mr. Viera Regosa, where do they plan, what are some of the ideas for the transportation museum, where else? Well, some of the ideas are possibly Sepulveda House, possibly Garnier Building. So, those are some. Off the street, but not the location of the old building? Yes. The historic building? Yes. Would it still qualify for the grant if we moved out of that? That's the hope and expectation, and we've engaged in preliminary talks with, have written a letter to Caltrans, and the hope is that, yes, that's a great place, because it's right across the street from Union Station. Right. And an opportunity for us to kind of continue with the spirit and intention of the original grant, which was to cite a transportation museum adjacent to Union Station. Well, great. Well, thank you. And anything we can do to help, I think it's real important, the work you're doing at Alvera Street and bringing it all back. But this is it. I remember the challenge that you had there. Thank you, Madam President, for the time.
Thank you. All right. We have the recommendation from Councilmember Viera Regosa to approve item 33 and receive and file item 55. That is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved.
Next item, Madam President. Item number 34 was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Let me recognize at this time, Councilmember Reyes, item 34.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to call this special, just so that we understand that we need this extension. Right now, in Lincoln Heights, we have many structures that are historic, that are going to transition, and we hate to lose them. This will allow us to freeze that activity. We're very close, I believe we're a few months away, of getting the actual historic preservation overlay zone completed for Highland Park, as well as the community design overlay. This will allow us, again, to preserve the character of the area, as well as attend to the housing needs in a manner that is equitable. So, I appreciate your support on this item. We need this ICO in order for us to finish up our work. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other speakers on this matter, so it's before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved.
Next item, Madam President. Item number 46 was called special for cards from the public.
All right. This is an item that is required public hearing. We have a number of speaker cards. Let me set this for a 10-minute public hearing. And I will call your name. Please line up behind the microphone and begin speaking. First speaker will be Elvayanez, followed by Janice Lunford, followed by Linda Fry.
Honorable councilmembers, my name is Elvayanez. I live at 4627 Harriman Avenue, adjacent to Elephant Hill in El Surino. I'm here representing Save Elephant Hill, a group of residents, 30 of whom, taking the time out of their day, their workday, to come address you and be attended to with your respect and attention. We've worked six months to stop track map 35022. Our long-term goal is to preserve this open space as a natural resource for passive recreation purposes. We're endorsed by a number of hundreds of individuals and numbers of community groups, including the LA 32 Neighborhood Council. We thank Councilmember Viera Regosa for his vigorous defense of the community from an odious and inappropriate development that will have irreversible economic and environmental consequences. The methods used by the developer, William D. Foote, to obtain track map 35022 in Los Angeles and in South Pasadena have been more than troubling. If I could have your attention, please? In February, under the pretext of soil testing, he began grading an access road without permits. Without disclosure, he has purchased 15 additional lots on Elephant Hill with plans for a large-scale development made possible by an access road. In late June, he misled the South Pasadena City Council by indicating that all conditions of approval, except for condition number 10, had been met, what in fact, conditions were being cleared here in Los Angeles until the expiration date last week. Rather than go through the standard procedure for planning developments in South Pasadena, he simply filed a lawsuit to get around a valid condition of approval placed on the map by this very city council in 1993. And now, he has sued the City of Los Angeles and Councilmember Viera Regosa. Mr. Foote has circumvented the planning process, not by cooperating with standard procedures or responding in a timely manner, and by applying inappropriate pressure by filing lawsuits that we believe are meritless. This behavior is business as usual for Mr. Foote and his current and former partnerships. He has a long history of suing to get his way and being sued for his atrocious developments. The developer's aggressive posturing should not be caused for deviation from standing city procedures or for approval of this track map. Even if one assumed, as alleged by the developer's lawsuit, that condition number 10 to obtain South Pasadena's approval for the development is invalid, by law, you as a city council must deny the map where other conditions are not met.
I'm going to ask you to try to wrap up.
The council must disapprove this track map because there are many other conditions of approval that were not met fully by the expiration date. Because these conditions are not the subject of the developer's lawsuit, we urge the city council to act in public session to disapprove track map 35022. We urge you to take action here today, independent of other action taken by the city on the lawsuit, to restore confidence in city government and to support the needs of the community, not the economic interests of an aggressive, out-of-town developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I think we'll ask the people to line up behind the microphone. Janice Lunford, followed by Linda Fry, who will be followed by David Brunk.
Good morning. I'm a resident of LA 932. My address is 4612 Harriman Avenue, and I would like to speak in behalf of Save Elephant Hill. I have lived there for 55 years and seen it develop around me on Harriman Avenue, which is wonderful. But I have these beautiful hills behind me, which I would prefer to not have a wall built back there to look at. Across in front of me, in Monterey Hills, is the same thing that is, he's trying to happen to Elephant Hill. And I am hoping that we can save it for the generations to come. My children have enjoyed the hills, and my grandchildren, and I hope to, my great-grandchildren will also be able to. Thank you very much, and I hope you consider saving it.
Linda Fry, who will be followed by David Brunk. Linda Fry?
Councilmembers, my name is Linda Fry, and I live in El Surino. I understand that the city attorney recently canceled condition 27 of the conditions of approval, but an alternative soil report was done in 93 and was supposed to have been filed with the city. Have you seen that report? When houses on the hill next to this site, an area with the same soil conditions, began to slide down, the builder was long gone with his profits, and the LA city taxpayer picked up the tab. The affirmative decision in 1993 was based on a report that said there were no trees of value on the site. In fact, the site is filled with dozens of California black walnut trees in full maturity. These protected trees need to at least be considered before they're destroyed, but they weren't considered in the decision of 93 because they weren't mentioned in the EIR report. Since 92, the Audubon Society has set up a center in the Nix Valley over. A naturalist from the center has recently studied the area and has stated that it is a rich animal habitat, especially for birds. But this couldn't have been considered in 93 because the report says that there is no valuable wildlife there. You may decide to destroy the oaks and the black walnuts and the animals' habitat, but do so with full knowledge of the facts, not on the error-ridden report of 92. This is 2004, 12 years later. A new, accurate EIR must be developed. We, the residents of El Surino, aren't rich. We can't afford to hire lawyers to file lawsuits to try to pressure politicians into giving us our way. I hope we wouldn't if we had the opportunity. But we actually live in Los Angeles. We are your constituents, and we ask you to see that justice is done.
Mr. Brunk will be followed by Joyce Dillard.
My name is David Brunk. I'm a board member of the Royal Second Neighborhood Council, a member of the Executive Board of the Northeast Democratic Party, and a board member of the Mount Washington Association. And I rise to support Mr. Viera Regosa's efforts to save Elephant Hill. I would like to make just one remark and turn over the balance of my time to Claire Marty Kenyon, who has been prepared to speak on this issue. The one thing I'd like to say is, these groups and others in our area are trying to work out some minor mitigation so we can support the proposal of our city councilman to have inclusive housing. We think we can do that with minor mitigation, but if you're going to take away all the open spaces we have left in our neighborhoods, it will be impossible to support that. So, please, let's work together so that we can have a solution to these problems. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Claire Marty Kenyon, representing the Mount Washington Homeowners Alliance. I'm the Chair of the Community Forest Advisory Committee for the city, and I'm the Vice President of Northeast Trees. And I'm asking you to disapprove the final map because the conditions required to approve the map have not been substantially met. In 1993, the vested tentative tract was approved. 11 years have been given to meet the conditions. In the end, the conditions were pushed through in the last two months with no review or meaningful input from the community that is affected. Because the developer chose to wait for months before submitting his paperwork, there's been very little time for real review. And in the last two weeks, the city, under the pressure of lawsuits, has had to speed up the process even more. This is when mistakes are made and conditions are cleared with insufficient scrutiny. The conditions regarding geology appear to have not been substantially met. This puts the city in a weak position regarding liability, because there are two major earthquake faults that cross this subdivision, and the area has a history of houses that have been lost to landslides. We can see that various conditions have not been met. All trees have not been accounted for. The animal regulation condition has not been accounted for. The fire plot plan condition has not been accounted for. The fire plot plan condition has not been met. These are just a few of the unmet conditions that support our argument that the final map should be disapproved per state law that requires that when all conditions have not been substantially met, the final map must be disapproved. I've been working with the residents of Elserino for the past several months, and I've seen firsthand that the subdivision process is a very flawed system in our city, and it warrants change. The conditions sent to the city clerk had no backup documentation to verify that they'd ever been met. Documentation is never centralized. It's scattered over various departments for the public, and those representing the public, it becomes a gargantuan task to locate all documents. It has to change. Any EIR begun twenty years ago and certified eleven years ago is out of date and should be sunsetted after five years. We need to work with the city and the state legislators to make these changes so the process is fair and includes the community that will be affected by the development. In conclusion, I ask you not to buckle under the stress of the trademark bully tactics used by this developer. It's clear that the city must follow its own procedures and state law and disapprove the map today. Send Mr. Foot back to the drawing board and submit a reasonable map with completed conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker will be Joyce Dillard.
You all have in front of you a sheet that was passed out. This is based on the old EIR. I was at an April fifteenth, two thousand and four meeting at the Community Redevelopment Department where Al Santianas, your project manager for Monterey Hills Development Area, mentioned that he had eighteen remnant parcels that were unbuildable. Some are moving. I repeat, some are moving. The Monterey Hills Project is within a thousand feet of this project. I think you need due diligence on this. You need to have his report and the parcels filed. You need a new EIR report. One of my friends lost her home in that landslide. This city doesn't need more lawsuits. It needs due diligence, and we request that you exercise proper judgment and safety for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker is Mr. Viorio Gosa.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. President, members, I rise in opposition to the final approval, the final map track three-five-zero-two-two for the property line northerly of Lathrip Street and westerly of Corona Drive, commonly known as Elephant Hill. This is, members, a place, if you know the east side, you know that the east side is some of the most dense area of the city, highest density levels in the city of Los Angeles on the east side, among the highest. It's an area that I grew up in, and as a young boy, used to go on cardboard down the hill because we didn't ski back then, and so what we would do is wait during the rainy season and go down those hills. It's an area that's been undeveloped all of these years, in a neighborhood that doesn't have the kind of open space and recreation that some neighborhoods have. As you know, LA is among the big cities, has less park space than any big city in the country, and open space, and this area has about a fraction of what some other parts of the city have. This EIR, folks, was completed twelve years ago. The process started twenty years ago. It's outdated and doesn't take into consideration changes in the neighborhood. In addition to that, I think a number of the speakers have pointed attention to some concerns regarding some of the conditions that were approved. Condition fifteen, for instance, requires a mitigation monitoring report that includes mitigation measures required by the final ERR. Our office has outstanding unanswered questions as to whether homeowners' associations are allowed to offer mitigations and whether this community has been appropriately dealt with. Condition number nineteen requires that a plot plan be submitted to the fire department and approved by them. The condition was cleared in May. However, the latest version of map three-five-zero-two-two was submitted on June twenty-second, and there's a concern on the part of our office, and I think on the part of the community, that the fire department approved an old and no longer valid version of the track map. Condition number twenty-five requires the Department of Animal Control to identify and relocate any significant animal life at the site. This condition was approved by the planning department, but our office is concerned that the Department of Animal Services did not adequately identify and safeguard animals on the site. In fact, in the letter that indicates approval, they admit that they didn't engage in the kind of due diligence that I would have liked. And for those reasons, I oppose this project. I believe, members, that in an area like this, that has historically been as dense as this one, where a community has come together questioning a twelve-year-old EIR, and where the answers have not been given appropriately, it seems to me that this matter should not be approved. Now, we've heard, obviously, from the city attorney's office, and I guess at some point we're going to be discussing it in closed session. I do want, however, whatever we do in closed session, to be reported back as appropriate here in public session so that whatever decision we make, we make in public. But it's been stated by the city attorney that notwithstanding these concerns with respect to the conditions of the land, that the city has to go ahead. I believe that where we have the kinds of concerns that have been identified by the community and concerns that frankly I share, I think the city needs to ask the appropriate questions before we approve this project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Viorio Gosa. Our next speaker is Ms. Miesakowski, to be followed by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, since we may go into executive session, a lot of this discussion may be given to us by the city attorney, but I think what I'm going to say can be said publicly, and I think it needs to be said publicly so the community understands some of the issues. Many of the issues that they talked about in terms of under the state subdivision law as to when and how you can turn down a map if it doesn't meet certain conditions are guidelines that are appropriate when we are approving a tentative map. That means when we're looking at, should we or should we not approve a development? What does the environmental impact report say? Shall there be an EIR? All of that was done on this property in nineteen ninety-three. It's one of the bad impacts and effects of state law, and I heard someone say that we should change the state law. Over all the years that I've been here, state law was changed to create greater ability for developers. When I first got here, if you got a tentative map approval, you had to record it in five years or it expired. So it was a definite, you had an EIR. Five years later, it was either in or out. State law has changed so that now you have almost open-ended, longer than ten years to record your map, so that some of the issues that the community's raising may seem out of date, but by state law, they are mandated. We are not looking at, should we or should we not approve a development today? That decision was made legally, affirmed, and EIR was certified twelve years ago. The only thing we're doing today is certifying that the final map has met the conditions. That map would not be before us if the city attorney, the city engineer, the city planning department, the city fire department, city wreck and park, and all of the building and safety, all of the agencies which were told back in ninety-three how this tract had to be mandated, all those conditions were set forth, all of those departments have signed off of each and every condition. According to our city attorney, a recording of a final map, and you'll always see on our agenda, the final maps are always at the end, they're rarely called special, because they are considered by the city attorney ministerial. We don't have discretion at this point to say, oh, this council is a different council. This council member who represents this district is a different council member. Who were he looking at it newly would say, there are a lot of issues here which I don't agree with. That discretion has been taken away from this council member and this council, and we are now only confirming that our city agencies have looked at this, have recorded it, have dealt with it, and have signed off, and it is before us for what is called a ministerial non-discretionary action. We may hear from the city attorney about that later and showing us the lack of latitude that we have. It doesn't mean that a lot of what the council member has said might not be true, but the only thing left is to work with that mitigation monitoring report, the agencies that are going to oversee it, the insight and input that the community wants step by step along the way, because that's the controlling document that as the development would go forward, those conditions are there. If this developer, given his reputation, miscues, missteps, doesn't follow those conditions in terms of absolutely the letter of the law, a stop order can be given and perhaps permits can be revoked. But that's not the point we're at now. We're at the point of saying, the map has been cleared by all the city agencies, and we have no discretion but to approve it. And so I think that that unfortunately is the situation that we are faced with today. And as I said, it's one of the things that we inherit, both by term limits and some state laws, which make decisions of some of the other former councils, not something that we might want to live with today, but because we are bound to have to live to it on a recording of a final map, that's the latitude that we have before us. So I don't know whether or not, I understand the city attorneys who handle this planning litigation will be in here if we determine to go into executive session, but other than that, I think we must affirm the final recording of the map.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmembers. I rise to support my colleague in this effort and all the community advocates that have been pressuring the process to make sure they get their voice heard. When I look at the record, this came to Planning, Land Use and Management on June sixteenth of nineteen ninety-three. When you look at the ten-year change, when you look at how poverty has risen, where our children have to be bused, where we don't have relief, these are the areas that suffer the most. I keep talking about the Taylor Two Cities, and this is one example, one glaring example of those imbalances. And colleagues, you know, back when nineteen ninety-three, I remember the Hyde Hill in Echo Park, which happens to be the base and where I believe Councilman Garcetti now lives. At that time, I had to resort to the Brentwood Plan, the Brentwood Community Plan, that states that, I believe it was eighty percent of open space in the hills have to remain pristine in their natural state. That is in the community plan. Today, it's very clear, we need to start revisiting these community plans and talk about how we preserve our open space despite the fact that it's still in private property hands. But this is a glaring example of why we need to create those updates. But if we are in a position to vote against it, I believe we should. I believe we should. Let's hear out the city attorney and start laying out the groundwork to see how we can maintain those open spaces. Today, we're going to talk about the watershed. We're going to talk about this bond. We're going to talk about how we clean up our waterways. How can we do that if we keep covering our open space? How can we do that if we don't give the land a chance to breathe? So colleagues, I hope we can at least pay attention to what's happened to these communities and show them that both sides of the city, all sides of the city, matter when it comes to their quality of life.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Viorio Gosa and Mr. Reyes, for your words as well. I think northeast Los Angeles sometimes gets cut out when you think about open space, and it's wonderful what we did in other parts of the city to preserve the open space. The recent self-assessment that went on, I know we have an open space coalition now that's come together in northeast Los Angeles to do what other communities have already learned they must do to preserve open space and to make sure that we aren't a place that because perhaps we don't always have as much wealth as some other ones, aren't overlooked in being able to take those jewels throughout our community and keep them as just that. So I didn't want to say too much. I think it's already been summarized. We appreciate your strong stance. No, I'm very much in support as well. And as we look at northeast coalition for an open space, I think we have to really look at the options we have to make sure that every Elephant Hill has the opportunities to stay green. There's similar properties in Silver Lake, the Red Car property, that was part of where the red car used to run through right next to Riverside Drive near Glendale. These linkages that we have, and especially as we look at the revitalization of the LA River, we only get one shot to do it. Once they're gone, they're gone. So appreciate the work that you're doing, and today, I hope that we can do something to keep this the way it is.
Mr. Viorio Gosa, and then I've also been advised, the city attorney may wish, to say a few words before we act on this matter. Mr. Viorio Gosa.
Yes, I was out of time on my first run, but I wanted to share an example or two of why I am as concerned as I am. As you know, one of the conditions I spoke to was the condition relating to animal services. The condition, I believe, is item number twenty-five. This is a copy of the letter. Let me just read a few points. It says, "This letter concerns a request by Monterey Partners. I ask the City of Los Angeles Department of Animal Services regarding the condition of planning." And then it goes on. "During this meeting, I discussed the department's role in satisfying conditions related to the environmental impact reports and tentative plans. It was explained that the environmental impact report was prepared for this tract in nineteen ninety-three but could not be located, nor could our department track this document down after so long a time." Now, it goes on to say, "Our department is familiar with a common species of animals with which we have frequent contacts, such as raccoons, opossums, skunks, coyotes, and other large and common mammals. Identifying other flora and fauna found within the region is not within the scope of this department, nor are we qualified to conduct any species counts, densities, or surveys. Finally, the proposed development, in my opinion, will not have any long-lasting or detrimental impact on these common species. However, I did not spend any time observing or examining the area in general or the specific tract, nor have I been asked to prepare a report. Some of these conditions, frankly, in my mind, were just pro forma approved in a way that causes me a great deal of concern. I am not standing up here because I want to contravene the law, either state law or our own ordinances. I truly believe that where a matter like this has been approved twenty-some-odd years ago, a process began, and the ARR was last looked at twelve years ago, it seems to me that this community deserves a more circumspect review than the one that was provided here."
Mr. City Attorney.
Counsel may recess into closed session on this item pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-A to confer with legal counsel due to pending litigation in Monterey Hills Partners versus City of Los Angeles, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number BS-oh-nine-oh-nine-seven-two. And at that closed session, legal counsel can underscore that this is a ministerial act and not a discretionary act.
Mr. City Attorney, is that your recommendation?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is there any objection to that recommendation, colleagues? If not, then we'll hold this temporarily on the desk until we do reach the point of this meeting where we do enter into closed session for further consideration of this item. Ms. Miesakowski? No? Okay. Without objection, we'll hold that on the desk before proceeding to the next item. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I would like to reconsider items twenty-one and twenty-two, a couple of pipeline franchises, and continue them for thirty days, if that's okay with everybody.
Okay. Let's open the roll and reconsideration of items twenty-one and twenty-two. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those items are reconsidered back before us, and without objection, continued for thirty days. That would bring us to the meeting of August twentieth. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number fifty-four was called special, and that's a CEO and CLA presentation, and I believe there is a card.
Okay. Item fifty-four. And let's take public comment for both fifty-four and fifty-six together. Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Anyway, I can have my three minutes at this time?
Ma'am, go ahead on fifty-four and fifty-six. Go ahead.
Okay. Could you put it up to time, please?
Go ahead, ma'am. Your time is running.
Knowing our state budget is out of order, and that Governor Schwarzenegger has not passed a plan that will help California. has not passed a plan that will help California. There's not enough money for museums, teachers, or for any classes. We must, at this time, United States of America Treasury must pay all businesses and arena bills of rent and mortgage, because the real estate has been cheating us on whom paying and whom we are paying to. Actually, we're paying our rent and mortgage to Iraqis people. All owners must continue to pay on their lights and gas bill. All people receive low price and not discount price if we pay mortgage and rent of all bills. Prices must remain low and never high again. Same price for items must be equal at any school, pardon me, at any store at the same price, and not different price, but same item, but different stores. An area cost is out of order.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask you to conclude now. This has been public comment for items 54 and 56. Public comment is now closed on these items. Before considering these items, members have had a request to take up item number one of the special meeting. So Madam Clerk, at this time, would you please temporarily recess the regular meeting and call the roll on the special meeting?
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohan Labange, Lethal Miss Kelsey Parks, Perry Reyes Smith, Verigosa Weiss, Sain Padia, thirteen members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The special meeting is officially in session. Colleagues, we do have a one-item special meeting agenda. We've also received a number of cards from members of the public to speak on this item. Before hearing from staff, let's hear from Francine Diamond, Rex Frankel, Jeff Peterson, David Beckman, and Mark Gold. Would you all please come forward?
Good morning. My name is Fran Diamond. I'm Chair of the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and I want to thank you for allowing me to address you today on this proposed water quality bond measure. I believe this bond measure can be a most significant measure to raise the funds necessary to address the very serious water quality problems that are facing this city. This bond demonstrates the council's commitment to protecting water quality, to protecting public health, and to protecting the $60 billion coastal economy. While the approval rests with the voters, the success of this bond measure really rests with the council. And basically, I think that how the monies are spent and what they're spent on is going to decide how successful this will be. It does seem that $500 million is a lot of money, and it is, but even that is not enough to do all that must be done to comply with the federal consent decree and to protect our rivers and our ocean from stormwater pollution and urban runoff. Let me give you an example. The estimated costs which come from the city for the TMDLs that we have already passed are these. The LA River Trash TMDL will cost $300 million. The Biona Creek Trash TMDL will cost $100 million. The Santa Monica Bay Bacteria TMDL will cost $500 million. And this does not include the many other TMDLs mandated by the consent decree and soon to be implemented. So with $500 million, there is not a cent to waste. I urge you to put into place necessary safeguards to ensure that this bond money is truly spent on projects that address significant water quality benefits with a close connection to TMDL compliance and to impaired waters. I believe that-
If I can ask you to conclude, we have a lot of speakers waiting.
Okay, I'll be done in just a minute. I would recommend that the council establish your panel to review and rank programs that have real teeth in it and have representation from the regional board. It seems to me that this is an obvious omission. The fact that the regional board is not, has no authority or input into how these monies will be spent and what projects will be selected is a real mistake. I think that we have an awful lot to offer the city. We have expertise in water quality, and I really offer our expertise and our participation and urge you to make that a part of this bond.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I hope to be celebrating with you some real water quality improvement as a result of this bond measure.
Rex Frankel, please, is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. I'm Rex Frankel. I represent environmental interests in the lower Biona Creek watershed. Our main concern here today is to speak about, there's 200 acres that's left that is unpaved, that is in private hands, and that is a suitable, perfect, ideal site for cleaning up Santa Monica Bay. What we're most concerned here is getting the most bang for our buck. What a lot of taxpayers tell us is that they don't want to spend a lot of money on a project that may not be giving them the real benefits that they need. And cleaning up Santa Monica Bay is foremost in the environmental movement right now, beyond our other goals of saving all of our remaining open spaces and providing parks for our children and our families. People are concerned, though, they don't want a Pub Works project that's akin to Metro Rail or even the Belmont High School project where costs escalate and what ultimately comes out of it is a mess and spends far more than you originally foresaw. So what's coming down is that even though the other cities in Los Angeles County have been claiming it would cost $50 billion to up to $280 billion to clean up the bay and to comply with the TMDL regulations, that's the high side. On the low side, you may be talking about a billion dollars here with this $500 million today and additional monies and additional ballot measures. What we're really concerned is that it may cost a lot more than that to do it with treatment plants and other relatively unnatural methods. If you were to buy the remaining 200 acres of unpaved land at Biona Wetlands, you could have the most cost-effective and least expensive method of naturally cleaning up Santa Monica Bay. And that dovetails exactly with an item that will be on your council agenda in September, which is a developer's plan to pave over 100 acres of that 200 acres near the Biona Wetlands.
Okay.
They don't need to develop that land. You should be considering the alternatives that have been put forth by the environmental community to study using that 100 acres plus the additional 100 acres that was once the DreamWorks Studio complex plan for this purpose of cleaning up Santa Monica Bay.
Thank you very much. Jeff Peterson is our next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Peterson, and I'm here representing the more than 37,000 members of the Surf Rider Foundation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. Surf Rider Foundation urges your support for this bond measure with amendments as proposed by the environmental community. We feel this bond measure will offer a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to recreate what's left of the historic Biona Wetlands. This area slated for development will be an indispensable component of your integrated resources plan. This currently degraded wetland can be restored to provide the natural water treatment processes inherent in wetlands biology. This area will also meet the second prong of the IRP because it sits on top of the only groundwater aquifer in the lower watershed. This natural opportunity offers an economically superior alternative for meeting your dual goals while simultaneously restoring a small portion of the 98% of coastal wetlands already lost due to poor planning. We didn't know the importance of these areas to water quality and thriving coastal environments, but we do now, and today we can start doing something about it. For the 37,000 members of the Surf Rider Foundation, thank you very much.
Thank you. David Beckman is our next speaker, and if I can ask Mark Gold, Dorothy Green, and Andy Lipkis to form a line behind the podium, then may expedite our hearing here.
Thank you very much, David Beckman with the Natural Resources Defense Council. I'll be very brief. It's essential that you provide voters with certainty that if they vote to support this bond, that they will get clean water as a result. And if you don't change the language that you have in Exhibit 1, you will not give reasonable people some certainty that they should vote yes. And if that's the case, then this is all for naught. It's important that the bond measure and the exhibit that's attached to it specify more than just projects shall provide water quality benefits. If I pick up a piece of trash on my way out of council today, I am helping water quality benefits. I'm accruing water quality benefits, but that should not make me subject to funding under this bond. So it's essential that the TMDL program not be used as a Trojan horse to fund other projects which have nothing to do with clean water. And unless and until this language becomes stronger, I don't think that this council is giving reasonable people in Los Angeles a good enough reason to support the bond. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mark Gold, Executive Director of the Environmental Group Heal the Bay. This obviously is a very important day for the council to make an important decision. We've had enough water quality problems here that have been recounted time and time again, beaches not safe for swimming, basically trash neighborhoods and rivers and creeks that look like, that aren't safe for aquatic life. And these are the sorts of major problems that this bond measure is designed to address. And as David Beckman just stated, the language that's there right now does not provide the assurance to the public, nor you, the council, that the projects that will go forward as part of this bond measure will achieve those goals. Accountability on how these dollars are spent is really what's critical. And as such, every single project shall reduce pollutant loads to impaired waters of Los Angeles to meet water quality standards. That is what absolutely has to be done. And to ensure that this occurs, right now, there is a mechanism of having an oversight committee, a citizen oversight committee, an administrative oversight committee, and some recommendations to improve that is ensure that the people who sit on those committees actually have some expertise. And expertise is as simple as having participated in one of your strongest programs in the entire city, your integrated water resources planning effort. So that would count as expertise as far as Heal the Bay is concerned. The other thing is on your administrative oversight committee, the fact that the Board of Public Works is not represented, that makes no sense whatsoever. They're the ones who are actually going to be in charge of implementing these projects. So that's something that needs to change and change immediately. And lastly, on the accountability end, is the citizen oversight committee and your administrative oversight committee need to work together through every step of the way to make sure that the project proposals are meeting the criteria, that the criteria that are actually developed to ensure that these projects are going to achieve improved water quality and that they're going to actually be implemented on time and effectively. All of those things need to be done together by both of these committees. So please make those amendments to make this a bond measure that's truly going to make Los Angeles a better place and give us cleaner water. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dorothy Green. Ms. Green will be followed by Andy Lipkis, Melanie Winter, and Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Thank you. I wanted to spend my few minutes before the city council to remind you of past history in the city of Los Angeles, when a different city council back in 1991 passed an ordinance that would tax folks to provide clean water for the city. That money was not spent for that purpose. It was spent to pay for street sweeping that was already being done, and most of the rest of it was just pilted away and put back into the general fund. This must not be allowed to happen anymore. We will not permit it to happen again. That was a different council. I'm depending upon you to be better watchdogs and to worry about making sure that this bond act really does what it's going to be sold to the citizenry to do, which is to clean our stormwater. Projects must have clean water benefits first and foremost. Yes, they can be multipurpose. Multipurpose projects can be given extra credit, but if they don't add to the cleanliness of the water as it reaches the ocean, then it does not qualify in my regard. And to make sure that those projects do have clean water benefits, I want to reiterate what Mark Gold said about the citizens advisory committee. We need a committee of people who are going to be involved, who have some background on clean water, and who set the priorities and determine how that money is going to be spent. We need to involve the Regional Water Quality Control Board on that committee or somewhere in this process. They have the expertise. They have the knowledge. They're in charge of compliance with the Clean Water Act, with the consent decree that this bond act is designed to meet the circumstances of. And we also need to have the Board of Public Works much more closely involved as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Lipkis.
Good morning. My name is Andy Lipkis. I'm president of Tree People, and I'm here representing our 18,000 members in Los Angeles, here to speak on behalf of the bond and to support your efforts and to thank you for taking this aggressive stand. I want to essentially echo what you've heard from the speakers before to say a few important points. The request for people with expertise to serve on an oversight committee is really feasible. The city, in its great work with the IRP, has invested over the last four years, has invested in providing training and education to over 100 stakeholders from all across Los Angeles. Those people would be suitable to serve on an oversight committee and represent their communities. Second issue is, the bond right now has the four categories that you're looking at. I want, if you're opening this up, I'd like to urge you to keep it flexible at this point, to be able to move dollars between the categories. We know the technologies are good. We just don't yet know which areas we're going to need to focus on. We don't want to see you tie your hands too stringently with those categories right now if you need to reshuffle the dollars. Because once we get the research from the IRP, other water quality research, we may need to pull different amounts from different columns. So keep it flexible. Two other points. We absolutely endorse mandatory water quality standards, and if you're so inclined, remember, water supply and conservation is also a huge crisis for this city. These same best management practices can be used to make sure that we're addressing water conservation and supply. And also, we still have a huge flood control and flood prevention issue in many districts in this city. These same projects can meet all three objectives, so make sure you have the ability to address that.
Thank you. Let me ask you to conclude soon, please.
Thank you.
Melanie Winter.
Good morning. Melanie Winter, Director of the River Project. I also echo the speakers before me in looking to make certain that we adhere to our primary objective of water quality improvements in Los Angeles. I'm very pleased to see some of the, many of the comments that have come previous in the hearings here incorporated in this new motion. There's a couple of comments I have. We do need to not forget habitat in our list of multiple objectives, and I would very much like to see that included in the multiples of the objectives. I echo Andy in saying I'd like to see some flexibility in the bond, in the project categories. If, at a minimum, I would like to see $50,000, $50,000, that'd be good, $50 million moved from the first category, which is very generic, to the third category, so as to ensure that we are going to focus sufficiently on source control. We really need to find ways to support source control projects so we're not always allowing the pollutants to be there and just trying to spend a lot of money to clean them up. Very strongly support previous comments on the citizen oversight committee, having all members with expertise in water quality. And again, will remind you that the IRP has average citizens in each and every one of your council districts who have been participating strongly in this process for the last four years. So expertise does not necessarily mean academia. Also, in terms of, we are bound and being driven by a timetable on this, and we have to bear that in mind, but I don't want us to rush ahead on projects on a too tight timetable. The timetable needs to be established in a way that's going to balance the need to move forward aggressively with adequate time to assess the techniques and develop sound projects. Water quality and TMDL compliance is an evolving field, and we need to have in this bond an objective that is going to allow us, that's going to require us to take an adaptive management approach so that we can look at projects as they're done, as technologies are evolving, test them, monitor them, assess them, and have a feedback loop. So we're not just stuck with the technologies that are available to us today, and also stuck with ordinances that we- stuck with ordinances that we currently have that would prevent many projects that we know would succeed. We have to have the time to be able to review and adapt our own ordinances that are standing in the way of many of the projects that this bond could support.
Thank you. Ms. Hawkins.
Again, I would like to say, on this proposal concerning water, no, because of the situation that is going on with our water from the mountains and our water that is concerning every head, the steel water, and awkward water that is in front of every store and grocery store that is now all being poisoning. We must be aware of the drivers that are illegally doing things, that are working for churches, and are taking a neater. Now, as you look at the water come from water head, our head, you can use a neater and poison the whole situation.
Thank you.
I'm very concerned about
Let me ask you to conclude, please.
Us doing the Brita machine and fossil water only at this time because we're at war.
Okay.
Again, we must be very aware of the plastic container and the danger zones that we are at. The steel water supposed to be only for animals and not for people.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. We now turn to council discussion. Before recognizing the first speaker, colleagues, if I can have your time for just a second for an announcement, we've just gotten word from the County Hollywood Administration that the County Board of Supervisors have voted four to one to place that half-cent public safety sales tax measure on the November ballot. So I thought you'd all be interested. Thank you for your support. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And it's wonderful news on one initiative, and I hope that we'll move forward with good news on a second today. I want to thank so many people who've been a part of this effort, Councilmember Weiss, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Jan Perry, who I just spoke with on the phone a little while ago, Winnie Gruhl, all people who've really come together on this to speak with one voice here inside this horseshoe of pushing forward what the city does. And I want to thank the folks who have been part of the community, every organization from, you know, Northeast Trees, Concerned Citizens of South Central, and certainly in Juanita Tate's memory, River Project, Heal the Bay, Tree People, Anawak Soccer, Northeast Trees, all the folks that have really done a lot of hard work in a very short time. We knew this was in a short period of time to be looking at this, and the Bureau of Sanitation and the CLA's office. Let us open a new page, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board, of course, can't forget them. Let us turn a new page in how this city deals with water. Let us today begin a journey that is closely mandated, closely watched, closely designed, carefully crafted, but at the same time looks at our ability as we've been seeing this looming financial need, and we've been seeing this looming pollution that is out there in our water, where we have something that should be cleaning our cities, something that should be a source of health that has actually become an urban pollutant. Who would have thought that water would become a pollutant in our time? And yet it has. And as we look at the language today, it was funny when we were talking about some of the things, you know, what is an impaired body of water? Unfortunately, everything in this city is an impaired body of water right now. And when we look at what we're going to do, people get this. When we looked at the polling of this, it's across communities, it's across ethnic categories, it's across age groups, it's across even party affiliations, it's across council districts, that people get what cleaning water is about and how important it is, not just for our water supply, but also looking critically at using these bodies of water as places that ultimately will be swimmable, fishable, drinkable, again. The changes that we've put in, and I have a motion before, as colleagues introduced with Mr. Weiss, to make sure that we get what we want out of this, which is accountability, and that the purpose of this is to clean water, that every project shall have as its primary purpose the reduction of pollutant loads to the impaired waters of Los Angeles to meet water quality standards. It's crystal clear, as crystal clear as water we want to see here. And by looking at the Citizens Oversight Committee, I think it is also clear to us that experience and expertise takes many incarnations, that sometimes, yes, it is a scientist, but sometimes it's a member of the Anawak Soccer League who for a year has participated in the Integrated Resources Plan, and now is somebody who has that expertise from a grassroots level that is as important as the scientific expertise at getting after clean water. Talking with Councilmember Perry, who wished she could be here today, she said that was critical to her, to her support of this, and with that in place, she supported it, and as I do today. We also, and I'll conclude because I know the time is up, we also have, I think, some questions that should be addressed, and I know some of my colleagues will ask that. Some of the things that speakers have raised, we have put in here to make sure, we've had kind of last-minute shuttle diplomacy going back and forth. But this does have as its primary purpose cleaning water, but it should be done intelligently so that we work across governmental lines, and we also work on joint-use projects that, as we've seen from some of the organizations that spoke today, are the projects that can and do work and that serve all communities. And we must not look at those projects somehow as something bad. Those projects, we will watch very carefully so that they are not something like pork. And in fact, we've written the language that we'll watch it carefully here today, too. But we must do it in a way that is intelligent, that works with our urban landscape, and that restores this living organism that is Los Angeles and its water. Thank you very much, colleagues, for your strong support. I urge you to vote for this today. Thank you.
Mr. Veragosa.
Yes, members, Mr. President, members, I rise in support of Mr. Garcetti's effort here. I do have a number of concerns, however, and want to raise them. I've heard from some of the individuals who have spoken. One of the issues that was raised today is the issue of adding habitat after open space, and I think is an issue that we shouldn't disregard. I think it's a good suggestion, it might be taken as a friendly amendment. I think, I am a little concerned, and obviously because of time, we had to move this, you know, that we may not be able to put everything in here that we would like, but I am concerned that there's, that there be enough flexibility here to allow us to focus, for instance, on source control rather than at the end of the pipe there, because that's a better investment of our dollars. It's a lot cheaper, as you know, and just a smarter investment. The other issue I wanted to raise is this issue of oversight. I know that Mr. Reyes has a concern about how we define expertise, and while I'm certainly agree with the idea that we want to have some expertise, we also want to represent, you know, all of the communities. And it may be that seven members of this committee is too small a number. I think there's an argument for something in the neighborhood of nine, because it allows us to have that happy medium of expertise, but also the representation that, I know that Mr. Reyes, Mr. Garcetti, and myself, who represent, I don't actually sit on that river, but I certainly represent communities who have a great concern there, and being that I'm the guy that allocated the money from the state a while back, I would like to have a little bit of a voice here. I think there was reference in the testimony today to a timetable. Maybe that doesn't get worked out here, but that's certainly a good suggestion, and I think we need to look at that issue as well. The, I know that there's the Citizen Oversight Committee and then the Internal Committee that was raised, and I am a 100% believer that we also need to have an internal oversight committee that begins with Public Works, because they're going to be intimately involved with this. And I think that's another suggestion that makes a lot of sense, and I think could be a friendly amendment here. And so, finally, this issue of ensuring that the bond funds are allocated to projects that will actually clean up stormwater and deal with the consent decree, and specifically stating that seems to be something that makes sense and that the Regional Water Quality Board play a role on this oversight. So I think those are some issues, frankly, I'd like to hear if, they may be friendly amendments, and certainly like to hear from Mr. Garcetti. And Mr. Deaton, just so we're absolutely clear, as you whisper in his ear sweet nothings, that you are obviously invited to weigh in as well.
Thank you.
Let's hear from Mr. Garcetti, then Mr. Deaton.
Just a point of information, so the amendments were the habitat one?
And where would that be in the, would that be on Exhibit One?
Well, before we do that, if I might.
Okay.
In Exhibit A, Exhibit One.
Hold on, Ron, hold on.
And what was the second one? Was there, was there a second, was that, that was a friendly amendment?
Yeah, that was.
Okay, all right.
I went through a number of them, but would you like me to go?
Well, it would be helpful, Mr. Veragosa, and we do have time, we have at least four members wishing to be heard still, and a presentation from the staff, there's a way we can just jot it down on paper.
Okay.
That'll make it easier to track. We'd appreciate that. Mr. Deaton?
First off, on the projects, the, all projects shall provide water quality benefits and shall be designed, one, to provide multiple benefits and purposes, including water supply, flood management, open space, and recreational benefits, and two, with consideration of source control measures and leveraging of funds in collaboration with other agencies. In order to protect public health, blah, 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 habitat wetlands restoration is in, specifically in this, in the amount, in the criteria or the overall requirement.
You're saying, Mr. Deaton, since I believe, may I respond? You're saying that there is flexibility with respect to source control?
Source control and habitat wetlands restoration and development.
Mr. Veragosa, I see not only Mr. Deaton nodding, but Mr. Cheveria from the City Attorney's Office back there, who I trust tremendously, nodding as well.
Okay. So I'll sit down with Mr. Garcetti on the other items while we're continuing discussion.
Ms. Haun.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I just want to rise and give my complete support of this bond measure. I really am proud of us today, and I think I'll be proud of the residents of Los Angeles when they pass this bond measure. But it's clear to all of us that our lakes and our oceans are polluted, and that we know the source of that pollution. And I love Ron's quote when we discussed this last time, he says, "I don't know a TMDL when I see it, but I know trash in the water." And I think that's what residents of Los Angeles know, they know trash in the water. And this bond measure is about cleaning our water and making it habitable for recreation. I know there are two projects in my district that I know fit the criteria absolutely exactly. This bond measure will provide $75 to $80 million for beach protection projects, and certainly in my area and beyond, people are aware of Cabrillo Beach that is situated right in the harbor, right by the Port of Los Angeles. This beach continually gets an F every single year from Heal the Bay. And this beach is a mother's beach. This is a beach with no waves, where mothers love to take their infants and their children, and they still do it, no matter what the rating is. And this is a perfect project. And this project is, Cabrillo Beach is polluted because we are at the end of the pipeline. We are at the end of the stream of trash and toxic and bacteria that enters our waterways throughout the city of Los Angeles and ends up in the Pacific Ocean and at Cabrillo Beach. This is a perfect project for that. This bond measure will also provide $60 to $70 million for urban lakes quality improvement. And again, my Lake Machado at Harbor Regional Park in Harbor City area is another perfect project that has been polluted because of neglect, year after year after year, because we haven't had the kind of money we've needed to dredge that lake and to keep trash from the Wilmington Storm Project from entering that lake. As we know now, that lake, we have regular, we have birds dying, we have ducks dying, and unfortunately, this year, we have our first case of West Nile virus affecting birds and mosquitoes at that lake. Because this lake is full of toxic material and bacteria, it is a breeding ground for mosquitoes. This bond measure will clean that lake up. This bond measure will clean Cabrillo Beach up. So I stand here to support this. I certainly am not opposed to expanding the Oversight Committee for a few members if that's what this council wants, but I will say today that I'm not in favor of making that Oversight Committee completely made up of experts. I don't think that's, should be the intention of that Oversight Committee, certainly, certain, some experts are good, but this is a people's bond measure. You know, we are, we are government of the people. We represent people, and it's people out in our communities who are swimming in these lakes and streams, who are going to the mother's beach. You know, I will completely trust them as much as I will trust an expert to decide whether or not this money is being spent properly. In fact, we will know it at Cabrillo Beach. We will know it if this money is being spent properly, because I think if it is, someday that beach will get an A from Heal the Bay. I'm proud of us today, and I want you to know that I will vigorously campaign for the passage of this bond measure, as I hope we all will. It's not enough to just put it on the ballot and let voters decide. We should also get out there with our neighborhood councils and vigorously support this measure and make sure that it passes. So finally, the future of our children and our grandchildren will be clean water in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Mr. Deaton, is Mr. Fujioka here? I don't know if he might be able to answer some of these questions as well, but I wanted to ask a couple of questions, and I would like to make a, hopefully a friendly amendment. Mr. Deaton, can the bond include a portion of it so that we can afford our controller the opportunity to review and/or maybe even audit as this bond as it's put into place over the years?
Right, we can, discussions with the City Attorney, we've provided for audits of individual projects, and within the legal constraints, audits of individual projects are appropriate and have been provided for on a periodic basis.
So we can possibly put some language in this bond that will actually provide those protections so that these protections can be afforded to the city of Los Angeles, rather than perhaps saying, "Well, we don't have the money to do the, to do that kind of oversight, therefore we have to put it off." We could actually write it into the bond.
Right. And so it would be project, we have the language in now that says projects will be audited periodically.
Okay.
If you wanted to specify by whom, then that...
Yes, I'd like, that's going to be part of what I'm going to say in a few minutes. In addition to that, I'd like to ask Mr. Fujioka and also yourself, you're very involved in many aspects of what we do in this city, and certainly when it comes to revenue and looking out for our best interests. If we don't do what this bond entails us to do, should it pass, could we, or are we even subject to perhaps some lawsuits and/or some federal or state fines where we can actually lose money or be required to give up Angelino's money if we don't take care of these problems that face us?
All of the above.
All of the above. And could, if that happens, and that probably has happened in the past, if that happens, could that be to the tune of millions of dollars that have nothing to do with fixing pipes or drain systems, but just goes to some other coffers that we don't even get to use that money here locally?
We would obviously fight that, but it has happened.
It has happened. Could it happen in the future?
It could happen.
Is our system aging?
Absolutely.
I'm not talking about people, I'm talking about the system.
Well, in some cases, we have no system. We haven't put into place the things necessary to do what we're suggesting in this. Some parts of the storm drain system, in fact, are aged, but what we're suggesting here is really to do something we, quite frankly, have not done before, which is to prevent trash and other things getting into the stormwater before it even gets to the storm drain, and then also preventing, as far as pollutants and et cetera, and also in some fashion trying to prevent more, reduce the amount of water that gets into the storm drain and heads into the river and the ocean as well.
Okay, what you're, I appreciate you breaking it down in layman's terms, just basic, simple terms, talking about, we're talking about trash, we're talking about storm drains, keeping it from getting in there, but the bottom line is this has to do with infrastructure.
Exactly.
Right? So any city, any community definitely needs infrastructure, and unfortunately, it's not a very sexy thing to say, "We're going to put some cement down, or we're going to put some girders," or what have you, but the bottom line is those are the kinds of things that have to be done, and this is what this bond is talking about.
Absolutely.
But equally important, in my opinion, I want to make sure that the public understands, if we don't do this, we have received lawsuits in the past, if we don't do this, we will receive lawsuits in the future. And in some cases, not only from individuals or organizations, we actually get fined by the federal government or the state government, saying, "You're out of compliance, you need to do something." And the bottom line is, every time they get us, every time they win a lawsuit, every time they do something like that, usually millions and millions of dollars will leave our community and won't fix the problem. And the bottom line is, it means millions of dollars to our people, to the people of Los Angeles. And I did a little breakdown, it talks about $33.5 million each year for 24 years. We have about 3.8 million people in the city of Los Angeles, and this comes out to $8.80 a year per person. a year per person, or per month. It comes out to about 75 cents per month, per Angelino, to take care of this problem. In my opinion, this is something that we are being penny wise and not pound foolish, and to get to the problem now is much better than trying to get to the problem 10 or 20 years later when somebody successfully forces us to do what we have to do anyway and what we should do. And with that, I have a, an amendment to put forth, and that is that the city attorney include the necessary language in the ordinance for an audit to be completed of the bond and program at specific time intervals or milestones throughout the process.
Is there a second to that?
Second by Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Reyes seconds. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I think this is a great day. Yesterday, at the Ad hoc River Committee, we got commentary from members who are participating with Bureau of Sanitation, and we talked about an inclusive process. We talked about how the department's going out there and speaking to folks. We're integrating ideas. When you look at Exhibit 1, we state, "Shall provide, all projects shall provide water quality benefits, and wherever feasible, shall be designed to provide multiple benefits and purposes, including water supply, flood management, open space, and recreation benefits." I won't go through the whole paragraph here, but the fact is, we're laying the foundation for a process that does speak to the need to have not only the experts from the city, but experts from all of the stakeholders. And in my mind, part of that expertise comes from the folks who live along the river. I was mentioning earlier, when I was discussing this with Councilmember Weiss and Councilmember Villagosa, that I wanted to make sure that a coach from Onowoc would be able to participate as an expert if they're trained in the IRP, if they're given certain training and expertise and knowledge about how this system works. But for me, that person's important, because we talk about multiple benefits, why not have the perspective of those folks who understand the pressures for not having natural habitats, for not having open space, for not having recreational opportunities that also clean the water, that have been scientifically proven to reach the same levels of cleanliness as of just a pure scientific approach with just pure engineering specifications without bringing in the natural element? For me, those individuals are also experts. And I believe Councilmember Perry responded to that when both her and I had a joint hearing as Chair of Ad hoc River Committee, as Chair of Environmental Committee. We wanted to understand what did expertise mean in the eyes of those advocating for that particular function. And she did bring forth the name of Anita Tate, God rest her soul, because she has been an expert in trying to bring in people to understand how the wetlands in her part of town could have multiple benefits. So I know my time ran out, I have more questions for Mr. Deaton, so I'll wait my turn. Thank you.
Mr. Lavans.
Thank you very much, Mr. Echeverria. Could you sit at the table, because as Mr. Padilla mentioned, you're an expert on this too as well? A couple of questions. What is the average cost per Los Angeles resident? What does it cost?
It's around $4 a month. Not average resident, average house.
$4 a month, paid for through our property tax bill or?
Right. This is a property tax override.
So $4 a month, and the CAO's not at the table, so I won't try you guys, but 4 times 12 is how much?
He'll probably tell you 4 and 1/4.
All right. Okay. So that's, how many bonds, okay, so, so how much is that a year? Approximately $60 a year?
$50.
$50 a year, okay. How many bonds do we have out now? How many bonds are the taxpayers of Los Angeles paying for right now? Do we know?
I'd have to get a copy.
Does anybody know?
Copy of the budget.
Does anybody know? I want to have that question answered, because I think it's important to know how many bonds we have sitting out there right now. How many years is this bond for?
I was talking, there's a billion dollars in outstanding bonds right now.
There's a billion dollars in outstanding bonds, but how many, what issues? Is there a library bond, the parks bond?
We have a library, the on prop F, which is a fire and animal services bond.
I think it would be helpful, members, every time we have a bond issue, and I do support this bond issue, that we know what our, what we're going to do. This morning, I had a meeting with my number one constituent, my wife Bridget. We went over our finances. We wanted to go over everything, you know, and looked at all the challenges that we have. And I think it's important to look at all those challenges so we can make sense of what we have to do, as to put it forward. So I think it would be appropriate to have that knowledge so that people know on that. I wanted also to ask a question. What happens to the tributaries and rivers north of the city limits? Let's just say Pasadena becomes a polluter, which they wouldn't, because they're the great city of Pasadena, but all of it comes down the Arroyo into our city. What do we, how do we deal with people north of the city limits or east of the city limits? And they come in. Has anyone done any thought, any expertise on this?
That's their responsibility.
Well, anybody from sanitation want to speak to it? Because all of a sudden, we're cleaning up a problem that another jurisdiction creates, and I want to know what, how do we deal with that?
Councilman, you asked a question about the duration of this bond?
Yes.
Depending on the, on the bits that we receive, we may go 20 to 30 years.
20 to 30 years. Thank you, Peter.
Sure. I'm Carrigan, Stone Water Program Manager. Most of the TMDLs thus far, Councilmember, have been written as a joint venture for all of the municipalities that are tributary to a given water body to get together, to create a plan to implement, to comply with the regulations.
But what is, how do we affect, because I guess the biggest one would be the Arroyo Zaco, as it feeds into that, or the Tohanga Wash, which is really a natural from the Angeles National Horse Federal Property. What are the big tributaries feed into the LA River?
There are a number of them. I don't know by memory right now, but the existing TMDLs, we are sitting down beside the stakeholder, the municipalities, that are currently discharging to those water bodies to identify everyone's roles and responsibilities.
But often too, and this is something else we should become from, cities of Los Angeles, Los Angeles residents pay more than some of the adjacent cities. And I believe there's 18 cities that we treat sewage from too, at Hyperion, is that correct?
Correct. 27 agencies.
27 agencies, and I, I just want to be fair to all of Los Angeles first, as we try to deal with this very important issue. I love the quote I received once from a firefighter lifeguard who said he works Dockweiler Beach, and for the first time in years, he's able to see dolphins again at that particular location. Hold him a time for one more moment, for Mr. Deaton, please. Thank you. In this bond, Mr. Deaton, what are you doing about street cleaning? Because it all starts in the street. 86% of all trash is located a foot to the curb. What, what deals with street cleaning?
In the bond situation, it's only for capital, and the street cleaning wouldn't be an eligible expense.
I've got 10 seconds. What is it, how do you deal with street cleaning? The problem of the trash in the gutters that lead to the drains, that lead to the rivers, lead to the ocean. What are we going to do about street cleaning?
You can either change the priorities in the budget, increase fees or taxes.
Members, I just think we should focus on street cleaning a lot, because it starts in the source, and we could all be very good about all the work that we're doing, and a lot of passionate people spoke about it, but unless we keep the streets of Los Angeles clean, we're always going to have trash in the river or having to spend $500 million on issues like this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, El Sorino, for clapping and understanding. I hope I get a clap from the good green community too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I particularly want to thank and acknowledge representatives from all the environmental organizations who are not only here in the audience today, but who have worked so hard behind the scenes for the last several weeks to try to narrow the gap on some of these issues and, and seek resolution. And I also want to thank Matt Gallagher from my office, who's worked so closely with them, along with Mr. Garcetti's office, to try to narrow those gaps, because we were not there yet. I think we're there now, and, and there's a motion, Mr. Garcetti and I have put in this morning, special 1V2, which, which does a lot of that narrowing. You know, I've listened to what, what my colleagues have said, and we've had discussions online and offline this morning with Mr. Reyes, and I also heard what Ms. Hahn said. And, and, and you're right, it's a people's bond in that it is supposed to benefit the people by providing them clean water. But it is also the people's money. It's a half billion dollars, and I am concerned that we put into place a mechanism, make sure that a half billion dollars of people's tax money is spent to the highest and possible, best possible use, is spent as wisely as possible, and is spent on the matter that it's advertised for, truth in advertising. And that's why I think it is terrific that we will be stating in the bond language, "Every project shall have as its primary purpose the reduction of pollutant loads to the impaired waters of Los Angeles to meet water quality standards." That's the primary purpose of what we're doing here. That's, that's why we're asking people to tax themselves to spend this money, and we have to make good on what we say we're going to do. I do believe there is a strong role for community members to play. I think, Mr. Reyes, I've talked about this, and I think you're right. The people that you have identified, as Ms. Winter said, would be exactly the sort of folks who would have the opportunity, could have the opportunity to serve. At the same time, I think all of us would agree that this is a very complicated, very complex, very technical, very, not only scientifically detailed field, but scientifically evolving field, and we will not be doing right by either the taxpayers of this city or the environmental advocates in this city if we do not insist upon a substantial degree of expertise in that Oversight Committee. That's why the final clause in the motion from me and Garcetti states that the appointees' expertise and experience in clean water issues shall be the basis of the appointment. Indeed, how could it be otherwise? And you're not suggesting, Mr. Reyes, that there be a community member who does not have such expertise. You wouldn't want such a person, and your community that you represent wouldn't want such a person either. So I don't think there's a lot of difference between our views. I just think that it's very important, as we go forward with this, to ensure that we have equal vigilance on both the, the public money aspect of this and on the environmental goals aspect of this. This is one area indeed where you can be very vigilant in terms of people's tax dollars and very vigilant in terms of environmental protection and be exactly on the same side. That's where we have to be. That's the commitment that I hope we're making today, and that's the commitment we're going to have to continue to make over the next several years, if, as I hope, the people approve this bond measure. Thank you.
Ms. Skrul.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I, I don't want to repeat all of the illustrious comments by my colleagues about the importance of clean water and the importance of this bond measure, and also to say thank you to the individuals who are here and the organizations represented, who have been here a day in and day out and, and fighting for this cause for many, many years. This is critically important and to educate the public about what this bond measure will mean for the city of Los Angeles and what it will mean for their clean water for decades to come. We always talk about here how difficult it is to put things on the ballot, how difficult it is to ask each of our residents to contribute to improving water quality in the city of Los Angeles. But the time has come, the time is now, for us to be able to do this. And so I wanted to stand up in support and with the amendments made by Mr. Weiss and Mr. Garcetti, and I think Mr. Villagosa will also, and Mr. Cardenas have added to that, support those as well. And I, I want to reiterate, I think, what both Ed and Eric said, the concerns raised by Jan Perry as well in our committee, to make sure that the advisory group was representative of the city as a whole, including both those that have had expertise, but those that also have toiled on this issue in the communities for years. So I think that the compromise that has been identified today is one that both the environmental community, our neighborhoods, and this council can support and move forward. So I stand in support of that today. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Certainly, I want to stand in support of this bond. I think that certainly, as Tom Lavans mentioned, in the 8th District, we certainly are concerned about what happens on street cleaning and with the amount of bulky items and a variety of things that are in the street and on the curbs. The only question I have, Mr. Deaton, is that when we look at this, as we've done with water rates recently, whether we're talking about 11%, we may have to come back, how much of this bond, how much of the problem will this bond solve? Is it going to fix all of our problems? Are we talking about 1/3? Are we going to come back in five years and say, "We need to come back to the community again"? I'm just wondering, is, have we put that in the equation?
It would be difficult to determine. I, I would say, you know, 25% or 1/3 of the problem. The difficulty is, it solves some problems very directly, and that's the trash issue very directly. The, there is a whole series of regulations coming down, and the, the question is, is can we, how successful will we be in developing systems to solve more than one of those problems at the same time? You, in, for example, in the Los Angeles River, I forget the number of billions of gallons of water that comes down after a half inch of rain on the region. And to build a, to put that into a reservoir would certainly be one big reservoir, and then we would have to, to treat it. I don't think that's going to be long-term the issue. I think that what this bond does is begin the process of figuring out ways of diverting the water, preventing the water from getting into the storm drain, from getting into the river, from getting into the bay, and either having a beneficial use for it, like I said the last time, in the Sun Valley issue, where we could perhaps just use it for groundwater replenishment, or use it for, in various containment areas, use it for landscape irrigation, use it for some other uses, and try to prevent that amount of water from getting there in the first place. It's just going to be how successful we are in, in solving more than one of those regulations with a particular technology or a particular project. And that, this allows us the, the ability to try a variety of approaches. If we latch on to one that is highly successful, then I, then my, my prediction will be higher load, depending how you want to look at it. And if we're not, then we're going to have a, a very difficult problem.
Because my concern is, as you mentioned, there's a lot of things coming down the pipe as it relates to the potential of escalating the cost and whether, whether we're picking 500 million because it might be the, a bond that we can pass, or whether it's really going to make the impact that we want, or should we be looking at a larger bite of the apple to solve a larger amount of the problem? Because I think what I've seen, and I think someone mentioned earlier, we have so many bonds that we come forward on, and the public at times thinks we're nickel and diming them by getting a piece of it and then coming back and asking for the next third and the next third.
Well, since I recommended the amount, I obviously think it's just the perfect number. But I, I think less than that is not going to allow us to look at some of the things that we need to look at. To do more than those, I think, is to speculate beyond what we reasonably can look at. I, I think this is a manageable issue. I think at its conclusion, we will have a lot of answers, we will have a lot of infrastructure, there'll definitely be less trash, we will be collecting that trash before it gets into the system, we'll be diverting a lot of bad things, toxins and bacterias, into the sewer system, we'll be doing a lot of very beneficial things, we'll also be looking at ways of making sure that water doesn't get into the river and into the bay. And so I, it's a, you know, could it be a little more, a little less, probably, but not, I don't think significantly. I think it's in the right ballpark for what we need to do now. I think the next, there will be a next time around, and I think we'll have a lot better visibility on, on, on those projects at that point.
So, so we should look at this as basically a starting point in that we'll narrow the scope, and even if we come back, we, possibly could be less than what we're talking about today?
Possibly. It's, it's a big problem. The, I live in, as you, as has been reported, in Seal Beach, which is at the mouth of the San Gabriel, and after a rainstorm, you know, on the way to work, I go over the river, and it's amazing, the stuff that's in that river, coming all the way down for miles and miles and miles, and, and the volume and the, and the, and the stuff is pretty, pretty impressive. And so you don't put your, you can't put a thumb in the dyke, you gotta, you gotta really hit it hard.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Zine is next.
Thank you. I'd like my colleagues to support this. I have a question regarding the, that storm water. We're just talking about the water that's generated through the We're just talking about the water that's generated through the streets, not water that's generated through the sewer system, not water that's generated through the commercial enterprise or from residents.
Right. This is not part of the sewer system. The only interconnection is that in certain areas, we divert stormwater in especially dry weather conditions into the sewer system to be treated. But that's relatively, volume-wise, it's very limited, but we are not making any changes to the sewer system. We are making changes to the storm drain system to use the sewer system in a limited area.
Okay. So the public information that's going to go out regarding this, who's going to be doing that, to encourage the voters to support this?
I assume that there will be an independent campaign committee set up, separate from the city. City cannot use any monies to advocate on elections.
I understand that. That's my concern. This is the end of July, nearly end of July. We're talking about November. Do we have any commitment from any groups that are willing to do that, or any committees that have been established to inform and educate the voters so they'll be able to pass that? Because when you go to the voters, especially those of us who represent the San Fernando Valley, they're very skeptical about any tax increase for any purpose, and without a substantial campaign to inform them of the benefits, there's great reluctance and resistance, and we've seen the history of ballot measures, whether it be for public safety or other operations, the valley doesn't do well in supporting measures when it comes to additional tax dollars. So the question is, is there anything that while the city can't do it, any mechanism or any process that anyone that you're knowledgeable is working on to give that education out to the people of the city of Los Angeles?
My understanding is that there will be such a committee, and there will be funds raised. I obviously have not--
But you've heard that, because that's a critical component. You put something on the ballot, it's going to cost a lot of money without the education as to the whys, especially in an area like the San Fernando Valley, which is, you know, temperatures over 100 degrees. They'd appreciate the water. To go to the ocean, they'd appreciate that, too. But that connection of why it's important for them to support it because of the impact on the region, the impact of the city--
Well, plus, they're in the case, this particular, the Sun Valley issue relative to diverting that water so it doesn't flood that area of the valley and other areas as well. There's a very direct relationship. But I believe that there will be a committee, and there will be money raised, and people will use that to educate the people on why to vote for this, as there has been, for example, in the fire and in the library and the police.
And we know some of those which were very important didn't pass. When we tried to do a 9/11 center, that didn't pass, and that was for public safety. We later came back around, and one did pass.
Right. Actually, the last several have passed--
Yes.
And I think it, there's, because the kind of committees you've talked about have been formed, and the education has been forthcoming, and I believe that there will be on this one as well.
And is the city able to answer questions such as when the Water and Power bill goes out, while it's not due directly to Water and Power, or the bill goes out, is there any public information that can be included in that, well, for educational purposes?
The city, on an ongoing basis, not, and won't be anymore between now and November, has an ongoing education program on stormwater, and I would assume that that would continue, but it's basically on the need to not put trash into the storm drains and et cetera. And I would assume that public education program would continue at the same rate that it has for the last several years.
Okay, and again, the cost to the average homeowner, citywide--
I think it's around $50 for a year.
And apartment dweller, commercial?
I don't--
Or is it parcel? Are we going to be doing it the parcel?
It's a parcel, but it's an override on the ad valorem tax, so the, it would depend on your assessed valuation.
So the cost to the commercial or the residential would be based upon the square foot of their lot?
No, the assessed valuation of their--
Assessed valuation.
Of their property. And the, for example, if it was an apartment house and you're renting, it would be on the owner of the apartment house, and then whatever would be passed through would be whatever those rules are. Directly, there would not be anything directly on the renter, except, I'm not sure of the rules on that.
Well, if it's like a condo, would a condo owner versus a hotel versus a commercial, in other words, is that mechanism, because we're talking about $50, are we talking greater for certain people and others, a different value for--
Depending on the value of their home, it'll be, or whatever piece of property you have, the more, the higher the assessed value, the higher the tax.
Okay, so the $50 is based on what assessed--
The averaged assessed value in the city.
Well, the city value is now nearing, nearly $400,000. The state value is $380-some-thousand. But when you look at commercial, you've got commercial that are worth millions of dollars--
And not that much, and some not worth $300,000 or $400,000 as well.
Right.
So it'd be whatever it is.
But the question is, for a formula, how can they come up with--
They can look at their assessed value.
And then what is the ratio of their assessed--
I'll have to give you the number.
Okay, because people are going to ask that question. We're not talking a flat $50. We're talking about based on the assessed value. So if you have a $4 million home, your assessed value is always going to be greater than a person with a $400,000 home.
Yes.
So your value of your contribution or your--
Be 10 times as much.
Mr. Fujo, could you have any information on that?
After this question, Mr. Zine, if I can ask you to press your button again.
That'll be the last one.
Okay.
I will sit down if I can get that question answered.
Well, just an example we have, well, we provide was just an example. We took the typical average home, and we use that to calculate the average impact it would have on an LA resident. Resident. Did that answer your question? Well, we used a value of a home of about $350,000.
Okay, so we're basing it about a $350,000 home, you're going to pay approximately $50 a year?
Yes.
So if you got a $4 million home, you're obviously going to pay more.
Oh, absolutely.
And if you got a less expensive home, you're going to pay less?
Yes.
If you have a $350,000 home, it would be around $50. If you had a $3,500,000 home, it'd be 10 times that, or 500 a year.
Okay, thank you.
Just around numbers.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes, to be followed by Mr. Villarosa.
Thank you, Council President. First, I just wanted to state that I strongly believe in Citizens Oversight Committee. I strongly believe in expertise in the field, and that is why I introduced the original amendment to have one. Unfortunately, it was left out in this final exhibit, so it comes to your desk as Exhibit Item 1B under the Special Agenda, and it states, "The city council shall use the Integrated Resource Plan, the Valley River Realization Plan, the watershed water management plan as guidelines to extent possible for the selection of projects." Now, the emphasis here, when we first put forth this amendment back when both Council Member Perry and I were having a special meeting on this, is that I know under the IPR stakeholders, for example, there we have folks advising us and interacting, such as Tree People, Regional Water Board, Folar, the River Project, Keel the Bay, Bay Keepers, Royal Seco Foundation, Klepey, neighborhood councils, and the Tahanga Watership. And this, for me, is significant in that we were moving along and trying to understand the role of the river, trying to understand how this watershed is beginning to evolve. We have subwatersheds that are also evolving, so these are very big-ticket items. This particular bond is going to, as Ron Dean has stated, is going to address elements of it, but we need to start somewhere. And so as we start leveraging, we start understanding the multiplier effect, we will realize real goals, as long as the water, the purity of the water is the major priority, we will also be in a position to look at how waterways can be improved, how natural habitats can become parks, all with the understanding that that also cleans the water. The ripple effect here, the multiplier effect here, is going to be that parts of the city, excuse me, parts of the city, without this intervention, won't realize that economic development. But that is a byproduct. It's not the primary reason for these monies. The primary reason is cleaning the waterways. So I just want to be emphatic about the objectives of these amendments, and quite frankly, as I'll show you with Mr. Dean, maybe it's not an amendment, it's just that they forgot to leave it out, but--
Right, I'd like to apologize. That, first, motion was, in fact, adopted by the council, and in my conversations with the city attorney, I failed to make sure that was included. So it was our, it would have been included, and I screwed up.
Thank you, Mr. Dean, and--
He was going to say that anyway, so--
It doesn't happen too often, now, does it? But the fact is, with these different entities involved in the process selection, we're trying to cover as many of the different stakeholders that are also dealing, not only with the river issue, but the whole watershed issue, because it is integrated, it's all interconnected, and hopefully we'll have some wisdom as a result of the combined knowledge that can be put forth in the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Villarosa is our next speaker. Mr. Villarosa?
Mr. President, members, on advice of the council president, I conferred with the author who has agreed to take the following amendment, so I just wanted to clarify what they were. We would add habitat to the preamble list of purposes. We'd ensure flexibility by adding Point 3 to the preamble, quote, "Employing an adaptive management approach incorporating assessment, feedback, and adaptation," quote-unquote. Item 3, we'd expand the committee to nine to include six experts, no, five experts and four community reps, and include the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We'd establish-- Item 4, we'd establish a reasonable timetable for launching and completing projects of 180 days. Item 5, we'd add the Board of Public Works to an internal oversight committee, and Item 6, we'd include a commitment to addressing TMDLs. And those were the amendments accepted by the author, and I want to acknowledge the author, everybody. I mean, when you think that Mr. Garcetti really had a few short precious days to be able to put something of this complexity together, it really says a lot for your leadership, and I want to thank you for that and for accepting these friendly amendments.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Villarosa, do you have that in writing?
Okay, our next speaker is Mr. Labange.
Mr. Deaton, you got a minute? One thing I just want to explain--
I'll try to make some time for you.
--because I think it's worthy of some good discussion here. Tell me about water. Who owns the water of Los Angeles?
The, if you're talking about the potable or drinking water, the Department of Water and Power has the charter responsibility and authority over that water. If you're talking, if you're talking about water, sewer water, as long as it's in the pipes and hasn't been processed for other uses, it's Board of Public Works. Once it's gone through a process like at Tillman or something, it is, reclaimed water is then gone back and it has been determined Department of Water and Power. Stormwater doesn't fit either of those categories. It's, to the extent that it's captured, for example, if you're looking at a project of capturing stormwater, which we do in the San Fernando Valley, and use it and have for many years to recharge the water table in the San Fernando Valley and the Los Angeles River, then as, when that water gets into the groundwater, it becomes, if you will, the property of Department of Water and Power and the city of Los Angeles.
But if we got out of City Hall, walked down the First Street steps and walked east and went to the First Street Bridge, walked out of the river, that water there is unowned?
Basically.
Orphaned?
But, well, I don't, unless you do, you know, have some beneficial use for it, it's going to go to the ocean. We have responsibility for it under the law, and because we have to make sure that there aren't certain things, like trash, that gets into it.
Now, so there's two, I don't want to use the word class, but there's two categories of water.
Well, three: stormwater, sewer, and potable or drinking water.
Okay, good. This bond would only be eligible for--
Stormwater.
Not anything to do with potable water?
Only, and to the extent that we're going to use, take stormwater, careful, and recharge the water supply with it.
Okay, but in the future, and let's say if we have any reservoirs that go out of service, would this be eligible if those reservoirs are transferred to non-potable water uses?
I mean, if we didn't, could we replace, could we put--
Encino Reservoir, Encino Reservoir is going under transformation, Lake Hollywood did, Rowena did, Silver Lake is going to eventually. Would these possibly be eligible for some consideration?
As retention, as retention of stormwater.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to ask that there. I do have a motion being circulated, members, to deal with, what's 1% of $500 million, Mr. Deaton?
55 million.
55, I'm just testing you, you know, I wasn't good there. 1%. I'd like to see 1% go for clean streets, because it all starts in the streets, and I think it's real important. Now, Mr. Miller, your good number-two man, told me I couldn't do that, and I wanted an explanation why I couldn't do that.
As I indicated before, and I'm sure Mr. Miller told you, that bond measures can only be used for capital--
Okay, so that's capital, but there's capital on the street. There's a gutter that you're going to spend money on at Santa Monica Boulevard and Coinga in the 4th District, right?
Now, if you had a bond issue to replace or develop new curbs, then that would be a proper use of the bond. To clean the curb, to clean the street, is not an appropriate use of the capital money.
Let me just ask a question here. So you're, I'm the gutter, you're the street, okay? So behind me, everything that's behind me, this $500 million bond pays for, but you're the gutter, so anything that's between me and the gutter, you can't pay for. You're saying that?
No. What I'm saying is, for example, in this instance, if you go up to a catch basin--
Right.
--and you put a trap in that catch basin, and you trap, you build that trap, you can build that trap with this bond.
Okay.
And when you do that theoretically, and hopefully practically, there'll be trash in the trap. You cannot use the bond money to take the trash out of the trap.
Let me ask you a question. If it's cheaper to get that 86% that I'm stuck on that's in a foot of a curb in the city that gets to the drain out there, why couldn't we apply some of that to prevent you having to spend the cost here at this trap? Why can't you apply that to that? Now, the people, the non-experts of Los Angeles are clapping for this right here, and it's silence from the experts, so we have a good debate going here, okay?
The people of California have spoken in the law, and what the law says, as long as it's capital, a general obligation bond can pay for it. If it is not capital, then you can't use, it could be in pursuit of the capital, for example, a project manager to build a building, or to build a street, or to build a catch basin, or a reservoir, or whatever. That's eligible. What isn't eligible is the maintenance and operation of whatever capital facility you've built.
So you're the street, and the drain comes to me, I'm the gutter, and this catches it here, this bond pays to catch it here.
Right.
Who pays for the person who goes to clean the gate at the--
The general fund will have to.
So how much will this $500 million bond be taxed in the general fund, you think, after five or 10 years?
Several million dollars.
Several million dollars.
And if we don't pass a fee with this one, we'll probably have to pass a fee in the future in order to pay for some of the maintenance five to 10 years out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, I have 39 more seconds here. I will have to call it back, because I have 39 more seconds of something I want to say when I find the research paper. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Smith?
Well, I think you did a very good exploration of the very concerns I had, and the concerns are, first of all, that you really can't spend bond money on this kind of work, Mr. Labange, and secondly, I didn't really think that the $330,000 we'd get off this year really make a huge contribution to street sweeping the city of L.A. anyway. If you look at the cost of street sweeping, that would be one district about. So, and I don't want to talk about council-- I don't talk about a council district, I'm talking about a street sweeping district. So it's not a huge contribution to the problem that you perceive. And really, I think from an argument point of view, we'd have a very hard time going to the voters and saying, this is to clean up our water in conformance with state law, but we're gonna take some of our O and M responsibilities that we really have the responsibility for as a government to provide our citizens out of our general fund. And that's our responsibility. And so we're gonna use the bond money to kind of do things that we should be doing anyway, is a very hard argument to make, and I hope we don't go down that road. So that was my first concern. Secondly, 180 days, yeah, 180 days, thank you, my assistant here, good chief deputy. The 180 days, I have a real concern, Mr. Vierigosa, and I ask if you could explain to me, when you said launching a project in 180 days, many of these things will take more than 180, some of these things may require EIRs, which are gonna take sometimes years. And so I don't understand a definition of launching a project. Well, that was the word, I thought that was the word you used. What was the word you used on the 180-day requirement? Adapt and approve criteria for ranking of a project within 180 days? Hold my type, please. On my type, go ahead.
Within 180 days of the city council passage of the bond, of the passage of the bond, rather, adopt, adapt and approve criteria for ranking and approving projects, not actually launching the projects.
Okay, then we're saying that then we're, within 180 days, we're gonna gain, put together the game plan for the entirety of this bond that will leave us no flexibility in the future to adapt to needs that we may discover as we go along.
No, no, that's not what we're saying.
Okay, I think it's a clarification.
We're saying we're gonna put a process together, because we can't put it today, and we should have a process. So what this says is that within 180 days of the passage of the bond, we're gonna put a process together for doing that. Originally, we had talked about 60 days, and Mr. Garcetti thought 180 days made more sense.
Why don't we say preliminary process? Because it'll be initial process, and I think we are all going to learn from this.
So we're talking about establishing guidelines for the future operations of the, okay, very good, thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Vierigosa, for your kind words that are equally well-deserved by Mr. Weiss and Mr. Reyes and Ms. Perry and the folks who have been a part of this in, behind the horseshoe. And those amendments, I think, do strengthen, and I appreciate, Mr. Vierigosa, the additions that you have made, and I think they help preserve both community participation, flexibility, and accountability. So I know the hard work is going to begin, hopefully, once this passes, after we have this passage today, and then officially on Friday. But one thing that I just wanted to underscore, because I know it was brought up by Mr. Zine, and I shared it with him, when we have looked at this and how voters respond to it, it really is throughout the city. It's strong in the valley, it's strong on the west side, it's strong on the east side, it's strong in South Los Angeles, it's strong at the harbor, maybe because of that instinctive thing that everybody in Los Angeles knows, that everybody's downstream from somebody and from something, and that this pollutant is flowing through our neighborhoods, quite literally, today. And the great work that Mr. Reyes is doing for us to reimagine the Los Angeles River and its tributaries, and our entire water basin, and that chance that we did have in committee to kind of dream again, and to imagine a Los Angeles that once was and that will be again, and the work that so many of you all have done, whether it's in a cleanup, whether it's in education efforts, whether it's in trying to take our own families and friends to water, be it our urban lakes, our streams, or the ocean. Today, we have that opportunity to take a brave step forward. I hope that many of you will join us in making sure that this passes if we get it on the ballot, because it will require hard work. But the initial numbers that we've seen show that people get this. They want to make sure that though, three or four years from now, they don't look back and say, well, it was supposed to do this, and it wound up doing that. So I appreciate that we've kept it clear, we've kept it narrow, we've kept it clean with some flexibility today, and I think that is something that when we look back a few years from now, we will have well taken a step forward to clean water in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Ms. Grule. Other members wish to be heard? If not, then Madam Clerk, would you please guide us through the series of amending motions?
Okay, the last amending motion that was presented was Councilmember Labange's motion, which is one.
That amending motion has been withdrawn.
One other change that I'd like to add to, in the beginning of the motion that submitted today, which starts reading the second paragraph, both committees will review project proposals that meet that criteria. Right now, it's just a period. I'd like to add in a time to be specified by the city council, again, to make sure that we have the timelines, accountability, will be flexibility, but in a time to be specified by the city council.
Mr. Reyes?
Just to be very clear, that particular suggestion from Councilmember Garcetti, what I would like to consider is have it, have this language in the provisions. The community discussed employing a strategic management approach that would incorporate assessment, feedback, and flexibility in the provisions. Just to reinforce.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry?
That the community discussed employing, discuss employing a strategic management approach that would incorporate assessment, feedback, and flexibility as part of the provisions.
Okay, you okay with that, Mr. Vierigosa? That affects the same, the language that you had as well?
It's an adaptive management approach, but yes, the.
So if we have it with adaptive management approach?
Yes, as long as, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Deaton? Mr. President, I apologize, but we're gonna have to prepare the final resolution and file it with the clerk after the meeting's over. We need to know the exact wording and where that is supposed to go, so I'm not sure where that last one was supposed to be inserted. I apologize.
Mr. Reyes? Where specifically did you want to insert that?
What, why don't we insert it where?
In the provisions.
Hold on, one at a time, one at a time.
In the preamble, because this point is gonna be added to the preamble, which is what you agreed to, so adding community input to that would be the appropriate place, I think, to put it. I do have a copy of the amendments that Mr. Garcetti has agreed on, or agreed to, rather, and if you need them for purposes.
That would be very helpful.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, clarification on Mr. Reyes's just comment. Where, thank you.
If you allow me, the language I'm asserting would be in Exhibit 1, as part of the first paragraph, as one of the provisions, so that can be part of the process we start looking at, at these projects, to make sure that we are employing a strategic management approach that would incorporate assessment, feedback, and flexibility. So that would be in Exhibit 1. It doesn't take away from what Councilmember Vierigosa's doing, what I'm doing is putting it in Exhibit.
I just needed to know where that was going to be, thank you.
Mr. Deaton?
What I would suggest is the council act on all the motions, and then recess this meeting, and go back to your regular scheduled meeting, and then give us a chance to work on the language, and make sure that we've got all that together, and then have you come back in session to this special meeting and adopt the final resolutions, so we have a little time to make sure we incorporate everything.
The language appropriately, okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, next step?
Okay, the next amendment would be Councilmember Garcetti, Weiss, and Reyes's motion, and that was amending Exhibit 1, Section 2, and also that would include, I believe, Councilmember Vierigosa's friendly amendment, and the language that Councilmember Garcetti just included after the first paragraph in a time to be specified by the city council.
Okay, any questions on this element? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
And also, Councilmember Reyes's motion, item 1B, and that was amending, or adding that the city council shall use the Integrated Resources Plan, the L.A. River Revitalization Plan and the Watershed Management Plan as guidelines to the extent possible for section of projects.
Let's open the roll on that amending motion, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next item?
Okay, and then, do you wish to then adopt it as amended, or wait until recess this meeting and then go back and do the?
I think what we'll do is, if all the amending motions have been clarified, then let's continue this matter back to the regular meeting, allow CLA, city attorney, and whoever else they need to engage, to finalize the resolution language, and we'll take it up near the conclusion of this meeting, and we'll be able to move forward. Is that clear? All right, let's, us then continue that item to the regular meeting, adjourn the special meeting, come back to the regular meeting, and before taking up the next item, Ms. Hahn had a motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, members. I apologize, earlier I was meaning to have us reconsider 21, 22, and 23, and we left out 23. So if you'd consider reconsidering item 23, which is another pipeline franchise, so we can continue it for 30 days, I would appreciate it.
Okay, let's open, open the roll in reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that's reconsidered, and without objection, continued, along with 21 and 22. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 27 was still on the desk, that was the Councilmember Reyes's request.
We also, I believe, had item 56 on the desk. We've held a public comment on that item. If there's no discussion on item 56, I believe we can dispense with that. On item 56, let's open the roll. Or did you wish to speak on that, Mr. Reyes?
Fourth with, please.
Okay, let's close the roll on item 56, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved, let's end that fourth with. Are we ready with item 27?
We need to continue that item, there's still some other issues arising.
Okay, for how much time?
Till Friday, please.
Okay, members, without objection, item 27 is continued to this Friday, and Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 54 was still on the desk, and that was a CAO/CLA presentation. Do you wish to keep that matter on the desk and go into closed session?
Let's see if we can't do that now. Fujioka's here, let's try to get Mr. Deaton back for a few minutes. I know he's working on resolution language. Ms. Zikowski?
We still have a number of executive sessions, I'm wondering if there'd be any problem with continuing this one day.
Is that okay? All right, without objection, then?
Tomorrow is the off-site meeting in CD 14.
I think it might be useful to have that discussion in the off-site meeting, if there's no objection.
Actually, before continuing, let's hold down at the desk, then. Oh, Mr. Deaton's back. Let's have a partial discussion now, because I think we're gonna get into some technical nitty-gritty, and that is a technical term, on the state budget negotiations. But I agree, Ms. Zikowski, I think discussion tomorrow, and the 14th council district would be helpful as well. You want to start it? Mr. Fujioka?
I guess, as part of this item, Ron and I have been asked to provide an update on the current status of the state budget deliberations. I think you know that for the past several weeks, we've had a number of folks working very diligently on this, including our council president, both in his current role, but also as the vice president of League of California Cities. We've had our mayor, who's been designated by the, the mayor's the top 10 cities, as one of the two representatives. The other representative is the mayor of Fresno. We have our league staff and our Sacramento legislative staff, who have been actively involved in the negotiations. There's been conference calls on a daily basis.
Mr. Fujioka, are any of those people girly boys?
I wasn't gonna flex right now, but, but you had to do that, didn't you? But anyway, there's been a number of meetings done, both, if not on a daily, there's been a couple of days where our staff were meeting throughout the entire day on this particular issue. I believe what's, what's happening right now is that the talks are focusing around the allocation of our revenue growth. And on that particular note, we passed out a chart to illustrate the significance of this particular issue. The discussion has been, has focused on our property and sales tax revenue, with the intent of basically preserving our base, freezing it in time, and then allowing the local voters to determine how any growth for those two categories would be reallocated within a local area. That is not, that's not a simple issue, that's a very complex issue. The chart I just distributed shows that over a 10-year period, our sales and property tax has grown about 40%. In hard dollars, it's about $323 million. And so if, in fact, we only preserved our base, potentially what is at risk is a significant amount of money for the city. If you look at, if you think in terms of $323 million and what that would pay, but even more important, we all know that our growth on a cumulative basis, but even on an individual basis, for our large revenue categories, is what drives our programs, is what funds our programs, starting with the simple things of when we buy equipment, our costs escalate two at a time, there's inflation factors, whether it's basic expense needs, or equipment needs, or capital programs, we have to stay in pace with inflation, but that, that is the issue. The other issue, Ron's been, Ron's been our point person on this, so I'll let him take over.
Basically, the legislature has agreed in, the vehicle being used right now is SCA 9, constitutional amendment, that has went through appropriations committee yesterday. They have agreed that they would protect, if you will, the base of property tax and sales tax. They have agreed that they would only borrow, if you will, from local government twice in 10 years, they would pay it back in three, that the, what they haven't agreed to is a cap. What local government has been saying is that it should be in the range of $1 billion, they borrowed, they've taken, I shouldn't say borrow, $1.3 billion from local government this, this coming year and the following year. In SCA 9 yesterday, there was, as it was presented to committee, there was a 10% of sales tax cap, which amounts to $4 billion compared to the $1.3 billion that they, as I just said, they've been, they were talking about taking. This would represent, obviously, a two-and-a-half times more than probably they've ever taken in the past, so in essence, it's the equivalent of not cap at all. There is a question of what the percent vote should be in order for them to borrow. Local government has added for a super, super majority of either four-fifths or three-quarters, believing that it would make it less likely, number one, but also it is local, the revenues that are being talked about are local government-generated, generated revenues. Sales tax, for example, the city of Los Angeles was the third city in the state to enact a sales tax. Property tax has, at the level that it is now, because of enactment by each city, in some cases, there has not, they don't have property tax, but in other cases, like ours, where it have been a heavily property tax city. But probably the most contentious issue is, as Bill said, is this growth issue. And if you look at the chart, between 2002 and 2003, our, our property tax goes up $55 million. What they're saying is, is they do not want to include in the protection that $55 million. They want to be able to distribute or reallocate that $55 billion, $55 million. They want to be able to distribute or reallocate that $55 billion, $55 million. The difference between the amount and two, for example, if they, if they did it in 2002, they would be able to realize in 2003 that additional $55 million. In 25 years of taking money in the legislature, they have never exceeded $55 million. So in one year of the property tax, we would exceed the amount of money that has ever been taken by the legislature, and in essence, the protection is a sham. What is being discussed is somehow this is a discussion of small cities, and what, and when you hear that, what they're talking about is sales tax cities versus property tax cities. There are a number, approaching 50 cities in this state, that have a high property tax usage, however you want to put it. The one that's closest to my house is Signal Hill, just to be specific. Signal Hill, population 10,000 to 15,000 people. It has a Costco, it has a Toys R Us, it has a Home Depot, it has five or six car dealerships. So on a per capita basis, their sales tax is very high. There has been, in the last few years, an interest in the legislature to eliminate the fiscalization of land use, another, which is code name for eliminating the big boxes from going to small cities and increasing the sales tax while the surrounding city, in this case, Long Beach, has a very low sales tax base. If that's the intent, then there should be some hold harmless on the dollar amounts. This isn't about that. It's about $55 million to the city of Los Angeles in growth. If you went on three years with that, they could take $150 million. It is a, it is a protection without protection. And we haven't been able to seemingly get that across, or if, if it has, it doesn't seem to be taking. But it would allow them to continue to, to be in the same situation they are now. That's not what this is about. This is fundamental and very important to the city.
Could I add one thing, though? On the same issue with respect to reallocation or the reapportionment of growth, what's been proposed is that the legislature could put a proposition on the ballot, on a local ballot, our county ballot, that would determine how the money be reallocated. That is something I think we must, and I think, we must oppose, because we're placed in a very difficult position, where we're placing our public safety needs against the needs of the county, the center around healthcare and child services and, and welfare services. And that's, I think that's putting an unfair burden on a city like ours. Thank you.
Councilmember Dea.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, when Ron and I were talking last week, we felt this briefing today was very important, not only to keep the council as a whole as up to date as possible on the status of negotiations and potential impacts in Sacramento, because, you know, we're reading a lot in the newspaper, and not all of it is unfortunately substance as to what is on the table and what is being negotiated. But also because I know a lot of us around this horseshoe have been getting phone calls from legislators, phone calls from other state leaders, asking us to weigh in on one side or the other on these issues as it pertains to the budget, sometimes even side issues as it pertains to the budget, and not everybody has tracked it as closely. And so I think the briefing that Mr. Deaton and Mr. Fujioka have provided, although lengthy, is very comprehensive as to what's going on. If I would bottom line it for you, I'd say that it's basically come down to this local government agreement with state government to two things. One is in the future, if the state wanted to borrow, not take, but borrow money from local government, what is a voting threshold that would need to be met in addition to declaration by the governor? Is it a two-thirds threshold, a three-fourths threshold, a four-fifths threshold, or somewhere in between? That's number one. And, and that's basically all that's left there, because all sort of terms and conditions for borrowing repayment have actually been worked out, believe it or not. We've made a lot of progress in the last couple of weeks. The other outstanding issue is what Mr. Deaton and Mr. Fujioka basically left on, and that is an issue that we're calling growth. What state officials, mainly in the legislature, and many of them are my friends, unfortunately, are telling us is, no, 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 look, we're committed to protecting your local government dollars. Well, that's only half true. What they're saying on paper at the bargaining table is, we're willing to protect your local government dollars up until the amount that you're generating this year. If this is a base year, we'll give you the property tax dollars, we'll give you the sales tax dollars that you're generating this year. But any growth is fair game for us to take, to reallocate, to redistribute. So that's the truth behind their local government protection that they're offering. And as Mr. Fujioka and Mr. Deaton have pointed out on this chart that they distributed, we're talking real big money here. If you run the numbers just from the last 10 years alone, you'll see that property tax, our own property tax levels have gone up 42%, and our sales tax dollars have gone up 40%. So if you apply that logic to the next 10 years, that means 10 years from now, the state would still protect us at base level, but 40%, if we continue to grow at these rates, 40% of the money can be redistributed, reallocated, moved away from cities, either to state or to counties or to other governments. Is that true constitutional protection of our dollars? I think not. And so, again, I wanted to highlight those two specifics. I know we're getting technical here, but the political reality is, aside from what we're reading in the newspaper, a lot of us around this horseshoe are being called, are being asked to send letters, are being asked to weigh in, in ways that are inconsistent not only with the negotiations that have taken place in Sacramento for months now, but are inconsistent with, with what is ultimately best for the city of Los Angeles. Not to discount the need and priority of healthcare in this state, not to discount the need and priority for education in this state, not to discount other priorities that this state is trying to grapple with, but folks, when it comes to school districts and when it comes to counties, their relationships with state government is very, very different in terms of policy regulations and restrictions. Counties in particular being an arm of state government, cities are very unique in this regard. We're not a connection to state government. And the dollars that flow to us have a very different relationship to our counterparts in school districts and in the counties. So I know this sometimes causes people's eyes to glaze over, but rest assured, the dollar amounts that we're speaking of here are of vital, vital importance to the fiscal health of our city in the long run.
Thank you, Councilmember Dea. Mr. Vierigosa.
Well, thank you for, Mr. Deaton, for providing us, and Mr. Fujioka, for providing us with this chart, because clearly when we're talking about 40% increase in revenues over the last 10 years, we're not talking about a few pennies here, we're talking about a lot of money. My understanding, though, is that part, and part of my concern, and I'll be real honest with you, having, understanding that this is about Los Angeles, but this is also about good public policy, which will ultimately affect Los Angeles. My understanding is that some were arguing on the part of the city of Los Angeles that a four fifths threshold be an appropriate, of approval be an appropriate threshold. And I'll be honest with you, you read the LA Times, you look at states all across the country, nobody has a four fifths threshold. The two thirds, only a handful of states have a two thirds threshold. Most have a majority. And they do because legislators and city councils and boards of supervisors should be able in, to do these things by a majority vote. That's why you get elected. You, you, you exercise your discretion, you, if the people don't agree with that discretion, then they have a right to, you know, to register their concerns during those elections. My concern is the threshold issue of a four fifths, which I understand was, was part of our negotiating position. Certainly, whereas here, you've, you've demonstrated that resolving the issue of growth is important to our negotiations. I, I have less concern with that right now than I do with the other. I think it's bad public policy to insist that the legislature agree to a four fifths rule. Nobody does it across the country, and I don't think they should either. And, but with respect, now, what I've heard from the legislature, and for me, this isn't an issue of friendship, these are good people. I don't, I don't raise this concern, I raise this out of public policy concerns, I don't, you know, but these people, many of them do represent the city of Los Angeles in the legislature. They've indicated that what they've said in these negotiations is that there won't be, not that the, the issue of growth is off the table, but that the issue, that the decision about how we allocate, allocate growth in the future is postponed to the future and not right now. Is that, is that assessment on their part correct? Or, or, because that's what I've heard.
Yeah, it is accepting that that's the same issue. If they're willing to say, which they, I have not heard them say, that we want to reallocate how much sales tax and how much property tax you get, and anyone at the initial year, for example, that you'll be held harmless and that you'll get the same amount, they have not said that. What they have said is that that $50 million, $55 million in that first year can be reallocated to special districts in the county away from cities. And since, and, and so that, if they're willing to somehow talk about a reallocation that is, that, that holds harmless, I think, then you can talk about the fiscalization of land use and some other public policy issues. That conversation hasn't been forthcoming up to this point. Also, on the four fifths, when the legislature is talking about, in essence, no, given the impression that there is, in fact, a cap, when the cap is three times as large as any amount they've ever taken, when they are saying they're protecting, but one year out, you could be in the same situation with having more, as much money exposed as they've ever taken, you, you, from a bargaining standpoint, hold out for a higher, you know, if those, if growth and the cap is the way it is in SCA 9, I'd want a four fifths vote. I would want to make it virtually impossible to do it. If they want to come down and talk about some of these other areas and, and, and protect us on some other issues, then I think that's a, that becomes less, less mandatory in the process. It's a, and I'm not suggesting that they haven't given at all, because I believe they have, but I think that we can't walk away from this thinking we protected our money when we actually haven't done that at all. And in 10 years, we'll have as much money as we have now exposed to.
So then it isn't, then the representation that, that, that the issue of growth was, is deferred to future years is not a correct representation? So, because what you're saying is, they're, they're not providing protections with respect to growth. And, and what I've heard from some of our legislative representatives who represent the city of Los Angeles, is that in fact, what they've said is that the issue of growth was deferred, that they didn't agree or disagree to hold us harmless, they just said, push that issue to future years.
Well, it's unfortunately both a yes and a no, and, you know, part of the frustration in this is sometimes we hear something slightly different between legislative leaders, both parties, both houses, and that from what we hear from members. In terms of pushing the growth question towards the future, yes, in some circles, it's been discussed as, you know, maybe a way to be able to move forward today, this year, adopt a budget and move forward. But neither side is willing to sign on to deferring the question of growth to the future without agreeing to what the parameters are. As Ron said, well, what happens in the meantime? Are we protected? Are we not protected until the growth issue is answered? Yes or no? There hasn't been agreement on that. If we're going to push the question of growth into the future, how do we propose to answer it in the future? Is it carte blanche to state government beginning in two years from now? I think not on our end. Or do we establish some sort of commission that'll take this on as a policy issue? And if so, then who's on the commission? And can they put proposals directly to vote, to the voters on the ballot? Or do they come through the legislature for approval? And, you know, so we get into the specifics of what is that vehicle for answering that question in the future? And it's those secondary questions that haven't been answered yet that has kept people from agreeing to put it off into the future. I think put it off into the future politically, maybe we add this thing, but we have to have those specifically defined parameters that both sides agree to before we can say go.
So is the issue of hold harmless with respect to home, hold harmless with respect to future growth or current?
Future.
Future.
Okay. Right. They're willing to guarantee the base.
When, I'm sorry, when was the last negotiation?
I don't know, I don't think there's any negotiations. Everybody's referring to their dictionaries and trying to figure out certain terms. But yesterday, I think there was some, some discussion yesterday, but the day before.
End of that, end of last week was the most substantive session.
That's my recollection. Okay, thank you.
Let me also suggest this, if, I think I'm on the cue still. To give you another example, colleagues, of what we're talking about protection versus no protection or growth versus no growth, it's been suggested, to show you the movement that some, some of the folks in the legislature have come from on this issue of growth. In the beginning of the conversations, they wanted to be able to reallocate, redistribute all of our dollars above and beyond the base when it comes to property tax and sales tax. And from their point of view, they made a big concession, a big movement in our direction when they said, okay, 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 we're not going to shift it to local, to state government, we'll keep it at the local government level, but allow the door to remain open, to be able to take money from cities collectively and/or special districts collectively, and move it to counties collectively or special districts, and being able to move monies around within local governments, but arguing that there's no benefit for state government in the meantime. Then they said they were taking another big step and conceding even more, when they said, okay, okay, we're not going to do that on a statewide level. Not only is the state not going to take our dollars or have this massive reallocation at a statewide level, but within a county, want to be able to move monies around between cities and counties and special districts. Well, when it comes to a city by city basis, that still is no true protection. So, again, at risk of going into too, too much detail and, and heartache here because of how these negotiations have, have continued to go, that's just examples of, when you're hearing something out of Sacramento from our friends in the legislature who say they are putting a local government protection proposal on the table, there are flaws in these things, folks. You know, we want to be helpful, we want to participate, there's negotiations that we need to be supporting in Sacramento, but not everything that you're hearing is, is ultimately true or completely true, and not every member of the legislature is as in tune to the specifics of the negotiations that have taken place with leadership.
Could I add one last point? There are, you know, the old adage about learning from history, or we tend to repeat things. The SP 90, it was a promise that, it's a state mandated a program, we'd be reimbursed for those mandates, and yet, because we have a substantial bill still outstanding with the state. After Prop 13, there was promises about keeping us whole, and yet, as time passed, more money was shifted from us, more of our property tax. And so, you know, it's, it's, there's a promise, but then there's past experience. The, the revenue growth is so critical that although they say it'll be kept locally, the, the potential, what we could lose would absolutely impact our current, the current services we provide, the, the level of services we provide, so we have to be very careful.
One final comment. Repeatedly, the, the discussion has been that local government should not be on any lesser footing as schools. What Prop 98 provides for is that a certain percent of state money, state general fund money, will be used for schools. The only time the state involves local government is in the bad times, not in the good times. Never have, when the state has been booming, has a state taken a portion of the general fund and diverted it to cities, counties, and special districts. It's, the only time that it becomes important is when we're in tight conditions and they need money from local government, and it's a one-way street. To make an arg- To make an argument that we'd be on equal footing with the schools is just without foundation.
Mr. Reyes, oh, excuse me, Ms. Zakowski, then Mr. Reyes, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for that presentation and clarification. I mean, obviously, I think the issue here, as you've said, is the growth, is this bulk potential that could grow in the future. And Mr. Verigosa is right, 80% is an incredibly high threshold that we have not, I think, in any elected body ever known necessarily. And I think that, as Mr. Deaton explained, it's important, too, that we're only looking for something like that as a protection with a commission or something in the future because we can't get that clarification now. Hopefully, we can get the clarification now that growth is guaranteed, is not to be taken again. And I guess the question either between Mr. Fujioka or Mr. Deaton or Mr. Padilla is, although negotiations seem to have broken off now, is there any, what is our best intelligence as to when or if or how this might come together again with, with any kind of consensus or movement? And as we've seen in the past in Sacramento, sometimes it happens all of a sudden, and I just want to know what the signals are, are there signals, are, is our consistency with staying with that issue on the growth and trying to convey it, being communicated where we think we are, are holding not only the high ground but good ground, or is there serious potential for erosion of that?
I think we're actually a lot closer than a lot of people would believe based on news reports. We really have come down to those two particular issues. And Mr. Verigosa, I would even argue that this issue of the threshold, the two-thirds versus four-fifths, or somewhere in between, not only is secondary in terms of concern and potential impact than the growth is, but it'll resolve itself once we resolve the growth question. And I think what we've heard informally since the beginning of the week is yet more movement from legislative leaders, more in our direction. So I'm optimistic. Wish we could get there, you know, quickly. Because of some of the comments that were made over the weekend, we're not around the table, you know, again, as quickly as, as we hoped to be coming into this week. But in terms of on issues, on policy, we're, we're a lot closer than people think. Part of what's, what's holding this up, too, and this frustrates everybody here, is this is one of the remaining issues that people are trying to leverage politically around the budget, including some issues that have nothing to do with the budget, the repeal of previously adopted legislation that's been signed into law, that sort of thing. So we have no way of, of, I guess, helping the state move further along in, on that front. It's just the political dynamic of Sacramento.
Okay, and so at this point, there's really nothing else that we should be doing other than to, obviously, monitoring it through our best agents who are going back and forth up there, as well as holding the course. I mean, I think there was an effort in the last week or two, and some of us got calls from our friends in Sacramento saying, you know, you're on the wrong track, do it this way. And so I don't know that that necessarily created any division, but it's important not to create division in terms of the, the city being consistent and its leaders being consistent with what we are trying to achieve.
On, on the policy, on the substantive negotiations, we're staying the course. On the politics, it couldn't help, colleagues, to, you know, let's reach out again to our own Assembly members and senators, whether they agree with us yet or not, continue to articulate what is our position, why it's so important to us, and help them come along to a position that's much, much closer to ours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Our next speaker is Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I, you know, we are one city, right?
Right.
I know in charter reform, is my understanding that our lobbyists in Sacramento are working on behalf of who? Was it the executive branch or was it the legislative branch of the city? Could someone answer that?
It used to be legislative, changed to executive in the charter.
Okay, so the mayor's office right now is taking the lead through lobbyists and working these details. And so this body doesn't have that access or that ability to deal with it on a day-to-day basis? Is that true?
Alex, although, although per the charter, I think what Councilwoman Zakowski stated is accurate, I've been involved in, in all the conference calls, and Councilwoman Padilla is as active as anyone. And so to say there's only one entity, and that being the executive branch, involved with these negotiations, wouldn't be accurate. And then we have Ron, who, from our administrative types, is absolutely the most experienced and qualified person to participate in the negotiations. He's been intimately involved. And so I, I personally see this as a city effort. I don't see this in terms of any parochial division or, or, you know, one line in this entity or whatever.
And the reason why I ask this question is because the phone calls I'm getting, the requests I'm getting to do letters and do X, Y, Z, it's not being portrayed that way. It's being portrayed as this city is responding to different points of view, that we're not on the same page. And so there's a lot of people I respect and trust up there, same time I know we have to be very cautious of how we make our decisions. So this dialogue for me helps me, but it doesn't really, well, give me a sense of where we're going, how long is it going to take?
And, and there's two fronts. One is I hope this clarified as to where we are and where we hope to be on the policy, on the substance. You know, in the political posturing, that's a whole different ballgame. As much as we think there's misinformation and rumors and, you know, different angles that take place around decisions that are made in this building, you know, multiply it by 100, and that gives you an idea of what Sacramento's like. But also understand that this isn't just the city of L.A. negotiating, negotiating with the state of California, there's a whole local government coalition that's been built. You have the League of California Cities representing all cities in the state, not just Los Angeles, but we're one of them. There's the California State Association of Counties. There's the Special Districts Association. And then, knowing that the biggest 10 cities by population in California and their mayors play a unique role, whether they're active in the League of Cities or not, they have sort of emerged as a fourth entity here. And so there's stakeholders from each of these categories of groups that are involved with the negotiations. So the mayor has certainly been very, very active and on the forefront of this, both on behalf of the Big Ten mayors. You know, I, you have my role as one of the vice presidents of the League of California Cities, so I think our city is very well represented and engaged in the conversation and decision-making that takes place, but it's collective decision-making that's going on.
So what I gather then is that, given all these different interests, all these different stakeholders, the stars are lining up, but the bottom line is that we're at a pivotal point on two major issues, and we have yet to resolve them.
But, but note that we started with at least a list of 50. So I've made a lot of progress to get to this point.
I could appreciate the pain here, but the fact is, we're getting, I'm trying to understand, I want to make sure we're coordinated in whatever we say.
Right.
And I would hope that, at least in my office, as things change or issues come up, I just have a clear understanding instead of trying to get an eardrake reaction to a request to do certain things and, and not be aware of what's being stated. If anything throws us off, and we might make assertions or write letters that, my blindside, whatever goal you're trying to achieve.
Yeah, I think what's happened in, just recently, though, is there's been a lot more activity on individual legislators than there had been up to this, up to this point. And I think that's created part of this difficulty. But basically, though, this council has taken the position of supporting what is now Prop 65 and the protection of local governments' revenues. And what's happened is, I think there's this nuance on the growth that you, what appears to be on one person's part at least protection, on our view is, has, is not protection. And trying to get that communicated has been difficult. And the, when you're dealing with some 400 cities and 58 counties and then numerous special districts, there's obviously some difference of opinion on the nuances in all that.
Well, from my point of view, the city of L.A. is probably, well, it is the biggest city in the state, but we probably make up more than half a population base in the state, so that comes with all its challenges.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
I'd like to just point out a few facts of what's going on in this situation. One of them is, when you talk about the four-fifths threshold in Sacramento, it's not unprecedented. For example, the tobacco settlement funds and the way the state has allocated those funds requires a four-fifths vote for them to change that. So a four-fifths vote is not unprecedented. There are other issues that require a four-fifths vote. But in fact, when it comes to budgeting issues, it is a two-thirds vote. That's not going to change anytime soon that I know of. But the bottom line is, we are not asking too much. But if you want to put things in order, in my opinion, first and foremost, we need to make sure that once and for all, we put in, in, in a constitutional protection our money, our local government money. And what that means is, just to put it into perspective, Sacramento has been stealing our lunch money for quite some time. Just in the last 10 years, they've taken over $10 billion over the last 10 years of local government money. And I also want to point out as well, it's not about having friends in the legislature or not, I've served with many of them, and so have Councilman Antonio Verigosa, have served with many of them, or still in the state senate and the state assembly, and some of them are actually constitutional officers. It's not about relationships or friendships, it's about understanding perspective. I will admit, at one time, I was the budget chairman of the state assembly, and I chaired the conference committee at the time as well. And what I'm saying today was not what I was saying or thinking back then. I was part of what local government sees as a problem, and I'll admit that. I didn't see it the way local government sees it because I didn't feel it the way local government felt it. And I'll say this again, and I've said this on the floor of this assembly as well. The state of California does not hire our firefighters, they do not hire our police officers, they do not man our parks, et cetera, et cetera. They do a lot of important things in the state of California, but those things they do not do. We are left to do that. And if we don't have the resources to do that, we're unable to do that as effectively as we know we need to do. So bottom line is, what we have in Sacramento are three main issues. One, we need a constitutional protection of our money. Secondly, we need to make sure that we get our growth dollars because someday those growth dollars are going to amount to more than what we're arguing about today. And third, in my opinion, what is a lesser issue, is a threshold vote of what it takes for the legislature to be able to access that money in the future. But in this case, we need to protect ourselves to make sure that we have it in writing, in black and white, that the Constitution says, that in statute, that if they take our money, we identify that it's ours. And secondly, we identify how exactly they're going to give it back. And the fact of the matter is, they shouldn't be able to dip into it year after year after year without giving it back to us. And that's where we've gotten to today in protections in the negotiations. As council president, who's been the number one person on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, certainly as the electeds, who've been in more meetings than anyone else, who's discussed this with more people than we care to even think of having to go through, Council President Padilla, on behalf of the League of Cities, in, in his role as a League of Cities member and also the president of this council, has been very involved, and he's helped shepherd this down to the final few, four or five issues that we have before us. And it's very important that we do not leave the table, it's very important that we just don't throw our hands up, and it's also very important for not, us not to forget, friends or not in Sacramento, the bottom line is, they do not see that money the way they, we see it. We see the money to buy, hire police officers, to man our parks, to hire firefighters, they see it to do other things with it. And it only could be in one place. Remember, people, $10 billion over the last 10 years Sacramento has kept from sending back to local government, and we're part of the bad end of that stick.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Padilla, I think to close.
Just wanted to close out on a few comments, colleagues. First of all, to vouch for what Councilmember Cardenas was saying about him not seeing the light when he was the chairman of the budget, and I know because I was on the other side of his desk trying to lobby him on behalf of the city. And one of the big paradigms that we're trying to break through in Sacramento is their mindset that it's their money and not local government dollars. Local government share of property tax, of sales tax, of vehicle license fee, we believe and we argue is local government dollars. And it almost seems like Sacramento thinks they're doing us a favor when they let us have our money. So we're trying to get past that mentality in, in the course of all of this. But somebody mentioned Proposition 65 earlier, and I wanted to again showcase the evolution of these discussions. This council has stood by cities up and down the state of California, counties up and down the state of California, both in the drafting of an initiative, a petition gathering process of initiative, and the qualifying of a ballot measure that is on this November ballot, known as Proposition 65, which, which will put an end once and for all of the states taking or borrowing our money. So with that on the ballot, what are we arguing about? We've been asked by state leaders to be more partners in the recovery and rebound of the California economy and the state budget for the next couple of years. And so we basically said, look, we're after our constitutional protection. We're willing to be team players here for the next couple of years in return for your support for our constitutional protection. That's what's gotten us to the table, and I think we've come a long way. We've come a long way from prohibiting the, the takings of money forever in the future to setting the highest of thresholds to ensure that only under the case of a severe fiscal emergency can state governments access our money. And even then, it's not the taking of our money, it's the borrowing of our money with some very strict terms and conditions, both on the borrowing and repayment. So I, I painted the picture earlier of how far the state thinks they've come. I've just described how far we have come as a local government coalition to reaching this middle ground, and I think we're almost there, but we're not quite there yet. Unfortunately, it has been clouded recently due to a lot of the political wrangling in Sacramento. I hope this briefing has been helpful to you all, both on the policy of it all, on the politics of it all. Let's continue to hang tight. We hope to be back at the table, we're ready and willing, any minute now, to be at, back at the table in Sacramento, and hope to have good news to report. But in the meantime, we do need to hang tight, and if any of us get these calls out of Sacramento asking us to weigh in around the negotiations and to circumvent that process, then let's check in with each other and make sure that we're not being blindsided here.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. I think the presentation has been completed, no action required. Madam Clerk?
The next item, then, Madam President, the closed session items. Do we should clear the desk before going into closed?
Yes, I think we have a question by Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe we have the language ready for the water bond. Is that correct, Mr. Deaton? And if so, if I could just ask that we, we take a vote on that first, if there's no objection?
Mr. Deaton?
I'll give it to you.
Just going to ask if a copy will be distributed to the council members.
Colleagues, they'll be distributing the copies of that item to all of you.
If you'd like, I can read the, the new parts.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Deaton.
Okay. All projects shall provide water quality benefits and have as their primary purpose the reduction of pollutant loads to be impaired waters of Los Angeles to meet water quality standards. In item one, the word habitat has been added, and this is in Exhibit 1. And the new item number three shall utilize a strategic adaptive management approach that incorporates assessment, feedback, adaptation, and flexibility. Additional provisions, citizens oversight committee with four members appointed by the mayor and five by the president of the city council. Two appointments by the mayor and three by the president shall be based upon the appointees' expertise and experience in clean water issues. One of the president's expert appointees shall be recommended by the regional water quality board. The other four members shall be knowledgeable community representatives. At administrative oversight committee, including a representative to be designated by the Board of Public Works, shall be established, et cetera, et cetera. The city council shall adopt criteria for the selection of individual projects for the above categories within 180 days of passage of the bond measure. Next, the city council shall use integrated resources plan, the Los Angeles River Rehabilitation Plan, and watershed water management plan as guidelines to the extent possible for the selection of projects. Both committees will review project proposals to determine if they meet the adopted criteria and recommend to the city council projects that meet the criteria in a time specified by the city council. And the last items, projects will be audited periodically by the city controller.
Thank you, Mr. Deaton. Mr. Cardenas is on the cue. No? Okay, your issue's been taken care of. Okay, Mr. Garcetti?
I would move, as amended, the, I think we've had, had good debate on this, I would move, as we've amended that, the language. I think Mr. Weiss might have one question, but otherwise, I would move it.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss has a question. Second on Mr. Garcetti's motion. Mr. Weiss? Mr. Weiss, are you, do you want to make comments now, or do anyone else have any questions?
You know, if I could just have a moment to clarify something with Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Villarosa.
Tom, do you want to start singing or something for us? No. Thanks anyway, it's okay. We'll be back in one moment.
Wendy?
Yes, Mr. Labonge.
You know how many street cleaners we got budgeted for the city?
How many street cleaners? I do not know.
Hundred and thirty-nine.
Hundred and thirty-nine.
Hundred and six are working. That's why I'm so passionate about street cleaning, because it does affect the whole cycle as it comes in trying to address those particular issues which are so important. So as they confer over there, I'll talk about the importance of street cleaning every day, and hope that we could one day have an effective law that would lower the cost of finding, because I don't know if we find people for littering as they do, and you look at the front shops of some of the streets, they don't take care of or maintain it, and all that gets put on the backs of the street cleaners of Los Angeles to try to remove that, to try to get effective ways to keep our streets clean.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you. Thank you, El Sorino. I want El Sorino here every day when I make a speech.
Colleagues, if we're not ready, should we put it on the desk and come back after closed session?
Yeah.
I move we put it on the desk until they conference it and go into closed session on other issues, then come back.
Okay. Unless you all are ready, we're going to put this on the table, Mr. Weiss.
I'll just move the previous question.
Okay.
Move the previous question.
Okay, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Villarosa, if you want to press your button, we'll go next to you, but Mr. Weiss is on the queue.
Mr. Labonge moved the previous question.
He was not formally, he wasn't formally recognized, you were on the queue, but I would have.
And if I'm on the queue, I defer to Mr. Villarosa, I think we've resolved our issue.
Yes. I guess Gribner's err, there was on item number three, it says expand the citizens oversight committee to nine members, including five experts. We'll just eliminate that language and say, expand the citizens oversight committee to nine members. All appointments by the mayor and the president of the council shall be based upon the appointees' expertise and experience in clean water issues.
That wasn't your motion. You're making a new motion.
No, no. I didn't use the word four knowledgeable members, I can tell you that.
You said four. I mean, I'm just.
But Mr. Weiss has raised the issue. This came back with this word, four knowledgeable community representatives, and we don't want to bifurcate it in that way. What we, we want to go with the original language, which said, all appointments by the mayor and the president of the council should be based upon the appointees' expertise and experience in clean water issues. Mr. Garcetti has agreed to that language, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Reyes, myself.
And Ms. Perry, who's not here, understands that, and we've, as we've talked about, like an out-of-soccer league person who's worked for a year IRP could be a good representative. It gives a lot of flexibility to her.
It leaves us enough flexibility.
Mr. Deaton, did you want to respond to that? And I think we're going with the original language of the first motion that was introduced by Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Weiss.
Well, I'll just, the original recommendation coming from the city attorney and from my office was that there be people who did not have water expertise. I'll make my point. And the recommendation had been that there would be four without and five with. Four, five members of the nine committee were going to have expertise, four were not.
What if we did expertise?
I don't.
Or experience?
Excuse me?
Expertise or experience would address that.
All right, okay. We don't want to negotiate, if you guys want to push a button, we'll be able to go ahead and go.
Anyway, I believe that the majority of this committee is appropriate to have water, clean water slash experience and education, and I have no problems with that. I fail to understand why, if the president of the council and the mayor want to have all seven or all nine, depending how large, they can in fact appoint them that way. But to, in the bond, preclude people who do not have specific water expertise, and not allow normal citizens, if you will, not that people who have water experience are abnormal. In any event, I'm just making my, I made it privately, and I'll make it publicly, I believe there should be room for the president of the council and the mayor to appoint somebody that has no experience in water, but might have financial experience, or just a whole lot of good experience, period.
Okay, Mr. Weiss still had your button pushed. Are you finished, or we'll go to Mr. Reyes, then Ms. Mieszkowski, and I think Mr. Padilla.
Well, I, no, in that case, let me just say that I, this concerns me, and you have every right to have those opinions, Mr. Deaton, but we have to vote on it. And we voted earlier today, I believe, if I could just, we voted earlier today, I believe we voted on that Garcetti amendment.
And Villarosa's amendment did include, expand the citizens oversight committee to nine members, including five experts and four knowledgeable community representatives.
Well, if it did, then that's certainly an oversight on my part, on the part of others. That's certainly not what we understood the intent to be, and Mr. Villarosa has clarified the intent. I think that this is easily rectifiable by going back to what I thought was the game plan earlier. And we've had so many conversations today about the sorts of people who, and the sorts of community-based experience that would qualify one to serve on this, that I just, I fail to see the need to now sort of open this can of worms here. So I would suggest that we keep that clause, it was the third moving clause of the Garcetti-Weiss-Reyes motion earlier, as the basis for the appointment, and we approve the Villarosa amendment to increase the number of committee members to nine. And I think that's a consensus, that's a consensus resolution.
Mr. Reyes.
Yes. We're going to have experts on this thing. We want to build confidence. We know people want to see clean water. We're not going to blow this just because we're going to have experts on this thing. The fact that we're going to have the integrated resource plan, rehabilitation plan, all those plans, and boards, and advisors are experts. So I think, and I would just support what Councilman Weiss just said, let's keep with what we understood, expand it to nine, and we will have experts.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Our next speaker on the queue, Ms. Mieszkowski, Councilmember Padilla, and then Mr. Labonge.
Okay, Mr. Reyes, I agree with you that we will have expertise, but do we have to define each person as an expert? A person taking their kid, as Ms. Hahn said, to the beach is an expert in terms of wanting to make sure that their, that beach experience is good and that they're not exposed. I can tell you a story, that the Pico-Kenner storm drain on the Santa Monica Beach, in the city of Santa Monica, got initiated because a mom took her kid to the beach, and there was a little storm drain there that had warm water in it, because it wasn't the ocean water, and yet it had dog feces in it. That was a call to the councilman's office that got that thing started, that got us coordinated. She wasn't an expert, but she sure knew. That person shouldn't be not able to be on this committee. Five members is fine. We have bond oversight committees for fire stations, for libraries, for police stations. They're citizens. We've talked about neighborhood councils, we've talked about getting people involved. And then, you know, what we've started to say, anybody can be experienced, if you're experienced, if you care, you're experienced, if you pick up litter, then let's not say experienced. Your quality of life person in the city, if you want to serve, five with specific expertise is fine. Four, people representing the quality of life who are hoping to get built on this and not make it, as you said, there's technical administrative oversight, there's integrated resources, there's all these other things that are already there, let's not just further confine or define this or limit it. Let's keep this balanced, nine members fine, five experts, four not necessarily needing specifically defined experts, but care a lot about the quality of life in this city, should I think do it without a sense of giving this away. We've defined what the project should be, we've defined how they will be rated in terms of expertise. I think we can rely on our citizens to do that, and not have all nine have a title or criteria or some kind of, something behind them.
If I may, on this particular issue, I mean, either way, we're going to do a good job. If that's what it takes to get this through, let's get it done.
Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I just wanted to also rise in full agreement with what Ms. Mieszkowski just articulated, with what Mr. Deaton has suggested, and I believe that is in keeping with the spirit and intent of what Mr. Villarosa had offered. And so when he had asked them to submit it in writing, it was exactly for this purpose, so that in case there was confusion later, we had something to refer back to, not just to play back the tape. So I guess my question at this point is to Mr. Cheveria, because I would appreciate some latitude in some appointments that this council will be considering in the future. I think there's much to be said about experience, about education, about expertise in these arenas, but heaven forbid, somebody like Juanita Tate, may she rest in peace, not be eligible to be serving in this capacity, or someone like Irene Tolvar, who I dearly love, and is a constituent, and has effectively served this city on a number of boards and oversight committees, including the recently passed Prop Q. She's not a retired police officer, you know, she hasn't worked as a consultant on the consent decree, but I think she has served this city very, very well on oversight committee of a bond. So I guess the bottom line is, do I or do I not, with the language that we have already voted on, or the language that Mr. Weiss is suggesting that we adopt, have the latitude to pay very close attention, as is warranted, to people with water policy expertise and experience? Or does that preclude me from perhaps offering up other individuals for consideration or service that could serve well, but may not have the resume of some of our friends who are staunch advocates in the environmental community? And go ahead, and then I have one more question.
Right. The language in the revised Exhibit One that we brought back to you gives that latitude, because it requires expertise for only five of the members, and the other four are not required to be experts. The alternative language that's being discussed is, would require that the appointments be based upon the appointees' expertise and experience in clean water issues. There is not an absolute requirement that they have the expertise, but this, I think this discussion would kind of shed light on the intent. Nevertheless, I think that the appointments could be based upon that expertise or experience in clean water issues, which are two different criteria, and you would have some latitude there, somewhat vague.
So we still enjoy some latitude, but not nearly as much as the current language that the council has already approved. And colleagues, let me ask this question, with all due respect to a lot of the environmental organizations that are here, that have been here, and do tremendous, tremendous service to public policy in Los Angeles, but I would hope, without stipulating one out of nine, or two out of nine, or seven out of nine, or whatever it is, that, and I know that in my appointments, I'm going to consider this heavily as well. It's not just about environmental issues, and yes, they are technical in nature, but what about environmental justice issues? Because not all of what concerns debate happens on the sands of the beach. A lot of it comes from upstream, and there needs to be a latitude in this whole structure for those voices to participate as well. So that's why I ask these questions, that's why I agree with what Ms. Mieszkowski has said, with what Mr. Deaton articulated, and others around his horseshoe, I think, are suggesting as well.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge.
I call for the previous question as related to this matter.
May I just clarify something?
We need a, yeah, we do need a clarification on the two items that we would be voting, because I think there's two separate language.
We'll pass the clarification to Mr. Villarosa.
This item three, thank you. This item three was negotiated with Mr. Garcetti, who had to get on a plane, which is why he's not here, he wanted to stay here. I would, and I just conferred with Mr. Deaton, I would confer, given how we've all interpreted the word expertise and experience, which is broad, we are not suggesting, as I think, you know, some have argued, that expertise and experience mean that you have to be water quality experts. You have to be involved, you have, we've actually used the word experience. In the interest of trying to address the concerns that Mr. Weiss has raised, I offered as a substitution, the original language of all appointments by the mayor and the president of the council shall be based upon the appointees' expertise and experience in clean water issues. That allows the president, it allows the mayor to make appointments of people that aren't water quality experts, but are involved in the issue, are impacted by the issue. It allows community representatives who have been working on these issues along the river, working with clean water issues to be in there, given the discussion that we've had here. So I don't see Mr. Weiss's proposal has in any way limiting community participation. And so, you know, my hope would be, given that Mr. Deaton has also said that he could live with that, that we would just accept that as a friendly amendment.
And that would be, Mr. Villarosa, a change in the document that's been provided to us in the additional provisions.
Yes.
Where it says.
Accepting as a friendly amendment, Mr. Weiss's language, which, it says expertise, it doesn't say expert. Has expertise, which means they have some, you know, and/or, and experience.
Okay. Let's, point of order, yes, question.
Point of order, I asked a question, Mr. Villarosa. If expertise and experience is as broad as you want, then why have it in there? Because it is potentially litigated. If we really mean anyone who's concerned, then that's good enough. Calling it expertise and experience means something definitionally. They don't necessarily mean a mother who's concerned about taking her daughter, her kid to the beach.
Okay, we have several people now who have put their names on the queue, some who have not spoken before. Mr. Parks, you are next on the queue.
Wait a second, wait a second, I'm part of information. I gave my time as a gentleman when I called for the question.
Yes, Mr. Labonge, they put you down farther because you had already spoken before, but since, I think Mr. Parks would let you go first in this instance.
I don't want Mr. Parks to go first, since he had spoken, I want to reserve my right to speak.
But you are next on the queue.
As a graduate of St. John Vianney, thank you. I would just like to say, and what concerns me on the language, if we change it from the document, it's not so much the expertise and experience as it is when we say in clean water issues, which really is limiting. We have four more people in the community that are knowledgeable community reps, that we would be limiting their ability to be a part of this, and we would not be limiting experts in the field by having them also fill the capacity of knowledgeable community reps. So I would hope that we would give the appointing authority as much of a broad selection criteria as possible, and I think with what's written and what was negotiated, at least from my perception, is what everyone could live with, but if we narrow it down and say that they have expertise and experience in clean water issues, that narrows it down to a handful of people, and a lot of discussion of our debating what that really means. But we certainly know what a knowledgeable community rep is, because we appoint them all the time. So I would hope that we'd stay with this language.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Now, Mr. Labonge, unfortunately, Ms. Hahn, who has not spoken, also precedes you.
I love these apple rolls. Madam Chair, council members, again, if somebody's watching on Channel 35 right now, they will have seen us spend the last, you know, 30 minutes debating this issue on the difference between expertise and being an expert, and this is just the kind of language I think we want to avoid in a landmark bond measure that we're going to put before the voters. And isn't it true that the environmental groups agreed on four out of seven, the original number of the oversight committee, they agreed on four out of seven to be experts, which is why we decided to go five out of nine? So I think it's clear, they have already agreed that four out of seven was okay with them. So I, in my opinion, and I usually bring the perspective of the average person out there, I talk to them all the time, I am one, I think this is a confusing language, and if we want it to be broad, let's just leave that out. We're going to have five experts, the rest, let's leave up to the discretion of the president of the city council and the mayor. I think that's what we should do here today, it makes it easier, and I don't think we have to worry about disappointing anyone with that decision.
Mr. Labonge, it's your turn.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Deaton, these appointees, five and four, are appointed by the mayor and the president of the city council. Do they come before us for approval?
Not with the language.
No, so they don't come before us with approval? So we should be, as Mr. Parks suggested, as Ms. Hahn suggested, as broad as can be? So he gives you that great blend. And sometimes... And sometimes it is a great blend of people who are not an expert. Because, yeah, it doesn't have the expertise at all on that situation, but has an expertise. And I think what Ms. Miesekowski said in response to what Ms. Hahn said about Mother's Beach and about a mother at Kenner Canyon, and, not Kenner, Kenner Storm Drain from Santa Monica Beach, made a difference. You know, one person makes a difference. So, I think it's good to have a broad. I stand for the widest representation as we can, and it will be up to the mayor and the council president to do that. And I think that solves Ed's original concern, if I could get a nod from Mr. Reyes, who was so passionate before, that it has the right amount of people. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Before we go to Mr. Weiss and Ms. Miesekowski, Mr. Deaton, if you could, could, Mr. Villarosa amended his motion, is it possible for you to specifically, as we look at those added provisions on the first page, specify where he has now made those changes? And just one other clarification, is this body an advisory body to the full city council?
Yes.
Yes.
What the provision, if you, on the first page of Exhibit 1, at the very last, the very last line, instead of reading the way it does now, what would be, the language would be, "All appointments by the mayor and the president of the council shall be based upon the appointees' expertise and experience in clean water issues." In other words, there would be nine members, four selected by the mayor, five by the president, that would do the duties here, and all of them would have experience in, appointees' expertise and experience in clean water issues.
And the other option that was before us here had five individuals who had expertise and experience, and four would be knowledgeable community representatives.
Right.
That's how it was currently written versus what you've just specified.
Exactly.
So, that would be our comments. And, Mr. Villarosa, if you want to comment on, since you had the amendment, then we will go to Weiss and Ms. Miesekowski.
I would, I just had a conversation, I was willing to accept Mr. Weiss's amendments as friendly, but given the discussion here, I think for now, I'm just going to go ahead with the amendments that we've agreed to. Because I don't want to, you know, I'm not sure, frankly, that this discussion is as real as it, as the passion seemed to indicate. But, but I know we agreed on this original language, and I prefer to move the original language, because I think at the end of the day, there's more agreement around the horseshoe here than we think, so.
And is that, Mr. Villarosa, that is the document which we have before us?
Right. So, I won't accept, at this point.
The language that Mr. Villarosa is expressing is in the document that is before you.
Yeah. What I am putting forward is the document that we've, Mr. Garcetti and I agreed to, that Mr. Deaton has put to writing and indicated that he agreed to, and not accepting the amendments at this point that Mr. Weiss offered as friendly.
Basically, it's five, five experts and four citizen knowledgeable.
I'm just going to leave the language as it was.
Thank you, Mr. Villarosa. Mr. Weiss and Ms. Miesekowski. You're fine, Ms. Miesekowski, Mr. Weiss? He'll pass. Okay. So, Mr. Villarosa, since you just spoke, you're no, I don't think you need to be on the queue again. So, what we are voting on, Madam Clerk and colleagues, is Exhibit 1 before you, and the language that has been specified with the five individuals who, based on appointees' expertise and experience in clean water issues, and four members that will be knowledgeable community representatives. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. That matter's been approved. We'll now go into executive session. Yes. Mr. City Attorney.
On Item Number 48, Councilmember Parks's recusal is required because he's a defendant in that lawsuit. And Item Number 53, Councilmembers Zine and Parks' recusal is required because they're defendants in that lawsuit.
And Madam President, do we wish to clear the desk quickly before going into closed session?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Yes, we do.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
And there's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, July 23 to arrive at 11:00 a.m. That meets council policy.
That item will be approved.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Colleagues, we would ask, I know we have several committee meetings and other items that, we've gone a little longer today than anticipated, if we could ask everyone, if they could please stay so that we can guarantee a quorum for those items that are very critical today. Some are very, are time sensitive.
Sorry, we're giving you a hard time there. All right, now we are in public session. So, Item 48 is before us, and that settlement in the amount of $119,255.60. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. Now, we will ask Mr. Zine to recuse himself so we can officially vote on the earlier item. No, now we are in public session on Item 54 to vote on that matter that Mr. And that's Item Number 53, settlement in the amount of $225,000 in the case of Chrisman versus City of Los Angeles. Open the roll on that matter. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That matter is approved. I believe we still have some other items remaining on the desk for closed session. There are three more items. 52, 50, and 49. Mr. Villarosa, do you have?
No, I thought we went back to open session.
Well, we'd gone back to open session just for the two items that the two members had to be recused on and took them in public session. Now, we have three remaining items that all the members can vote on, but must be back in closed session. With three more recommendations. We voted on it. We can announce the vote. We can announce the vote and what it was. We are going back into closed session to deal with three remaining items to discuss with. We are back in public session. We will take official actions on the matters before us. We've been asked to revote on Item 46. Let me recognize Mr. Villarosa.
Just want to clarify for the Madam President members, for the public, both the public watching here in the chamber and the public watching on television, that we had to go into closed session because of the city attorney's recommendation that we go into closed session to discuss this matter. We voted in closed session. Your request had been that we not limit ourselves to just closed session vote, and we don't do that. We bring it back to open session, and that's what we're going to do. And so, I just wanted to clarify that because I'm not sure that people understood that because of the city attorney's recommendation, the, we go into closed session to discuss, discussions, by the way, which are public record as well. And so.
Mr. Villarosa, the record in closed session stays closed. The result and a public vote needs to be taken on it, but it is not a part of a public record. The closed session discussion with the city attorney is advice from our legal counsel.
But in a lawsuit, one could.
It could be discoverable in a lawsuit.
It could be discoverable, I'm sorry. Thank you very much for clarifying that. It could be discoverable in a lawsuit, and to that extent, it could, at some point, have the potential of being public. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much.
All right. We now have Item 46 before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
That matter is approved as recommended. The next item, Ms. Clerk? Next item, Madam President, Item Number 50, and that is settlement in the case of Alexander Kahn versus City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $355,000. Open the roll on the Kahn settlement. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter's approved. And the next item, Madam President, is Item Number 52. That's a workers' comp case, and it's Holt versus the City of Los Angeles. That's in the amount of $108,445 with a lifetime pension thereafter in the amount of $57,98 per week. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. And that clears the desk. Are there any announcements or adjourning tributes? There are. We have apparently no announcements, but we do have adjourning tributes. And let me also announce that tomorrow, we have an off-site meeting. Let Mr. Villarosa announce that meeting and time and place.
Yes, thank you, Madam President members. Tomorrow, we have an off-site council meeting, Wednesday, July 21, for the first time ever in Alserino, a great community in the 14th Councilmatic District. It begins at 5:30 p.m. at the Presbyterian Church, 2241 Northeastern Avenue. There'll be a reception followed by the meeting.
All right. I believe we now have adjourning tributes. Would everyone please stand? Let me recognize Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for adjourning motions. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Anita Tridoris Edwards, who's the mother of NAACP National Board Member Willis Edwards. She passed away at age of 90 on Monday, July 19. Funeral services are pending. She leaves three children and 29 grandchildren. What's unfortunate, she was preparing to go to DNC when she passed away. The other adjourning motion asks that we adjourn in memory of, let's see, Christie Johnson-White was born in Scotlandville, Louisiana, on September 26, 1912. She moved to Chicago in 1940 and met and married her husband, and in 1949, she and her family moved to Hancock Park in Los Angeles. She's been a member of several Los Angeles social clubs, including the Women's Sunday Morning Breakfast Club that was founded by Councilman Lindsay, also the 12 Links Club, and she was the founder and president of a local church club called the Secret Six Club, organized in 1954. Upon her direction, the Secret Six Club raised thousands of dollars for the church for a variety of charities throughout the city. She leaves a host of relatives.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like us to adjourn our meeting today in the memory of Catherine Tipich, a San Pedro resident of 80 years. She passed away recently at the age of 94. Catherine was born in Stari Grad, Croatia, moving to the United States at the age of four, and she married Andrew Tipich in 1928, and they had five sons together. She was the past president of the Mary Starr Alter Society, founder and charter president of the Fisherman's Co-op Auxiliary, a lifetime member of the International Turanium Society, and one of the longest active members and past president of the San Pedro Garden Club. Catherine is survived by sons Andrew Jr., Jack, Anthony, and John, daughter-in-law Karen, nine grandchildren, and seven great-grandchildren.
Other tributes, Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd like to ask that you join me in adjourning in memory of the father of my staff member, Elizabeth Trehe. Her father, John Francis Trehe, passed away on Saturday, July 17. He was born April 16, 1933, and had been married for a long time to the late Beverly Trehe, Elizabeth's mother. He served in the American Navy when he was younger, and then, as an adult, interestingly enough, he also served in the Canadian Navy. In addition to being, he's survived by two children as well as his son-in-law.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. We are adjourned.